We're good to go, Tiffany.
Okay. Good evening and welcome to the November 12th, 2020 Planning Commission's special video meeting. I am Tiffany Goodman and Chair of the Planning Commission. In accordance with Proclamation 20-28 dot 11 and the Governor's Extended Safe Start Order, tonight's Planning Commission meeting is using video conferencing technology provided by Zoom. The Zoom video of this meeting is being broadcast live via Zoom and will be uploaded to the city's YouTube channel. CPD Director Jeff Thompson, Deputy CPD Director Allison Van Corp and several other staff members are participating in tonight's meeting remotely. Other public audience members are listening to the meeting by telephone or via the Internet. Welcome all and thank you for joining us tonight. All right, we'll move on to roll call. Commissioners, please ensure that your microphones are turned on for the roll call. And Andrea, go ahead, please.
Chair Goodman.
Oh, here.
Vice Chair Mitchum.
Here.
Commissioner Boatsman.
Here.
Commissioner Hubbell.
President.
Commissioner Murphy.
Here.
Commissioner Pritsio Bireoli.
President.
And Commissioner Weinberg.
President.
Okay, wonderful. Commissioners, before we start the business of tonight's meeting, I have a few rules suggested by staff to help the meeting run smoothly. If a commissioner has a question, please use the raise the hand feature and I'll do my best to recognize commissioners in the order in which their hand was raised. I guess my only question for this is maybe we should physically raise our hands too. I'm not sure how easy it is for me to see the raise hand feature. So if you... Does it make sense that we would do both? Is that good? That we could physically raise our hand and if we're able to raise the raise hand feature in the computer? Okay.
Can you...
Every...
Where the raise hand is in the user interface?
Sure. I do on my computer. It's just because I have a different device right now. Well, actually, I probably can see it. I think it's probably fine by one of the participants and I think I can see it. Okay, everyone will be asked to... Oh, yep.
I don't see the raise hand feature on the bottom of my screen. Where is it?
You have three dots.
Oh, yeah.
I don't see it on my screen either.
I don't see it either.
On... If you click on the participants button, there should be three dots or the action at the bottom of the participants thing that says raise hand.
So I click on the participants button. That opens up another window that says Participants, parentheses, 14 at the top. Wait at the bottom, there's this little dot, dot, dot button. When I click on that, it says raise hand.
Yes.
That's where it is.
That's what I was trying to say.
Yep.
Okay, I see it there. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you. It says everyone will be asked to limit themselves to one question and one clarifying question if necessary so that each commissioner can have a chance to ask questions before another commissioner is given a chance. But I think we've all worked together in the past pretty well. So I think we have a pretty good system down. I'm not concerned about that at all. All right, the first item of business is the election of the Chair and the Vice Chair. And staff, would you like to give an overview of the process?
Yes. Allison, can you please bring up the PowerPoint? Good evening, Commission. This is Andrea Larson, Senior Admin for the Community Planning and Development Group. I just have a real quick overview of the process for the election of the Chair and Vice Chair. So Chair Goodman will ask for nominations. There's no second required for these. So anybody can nominate anyone else on there and then we vote on the nominations in the order they come in. Once we hit a majority of votes in favor, so four, that person is elected Chair and there's no further voting even if there were other people that were nominated. So once we have the majority of four, that person is elected Chair. The new Chair will then conduct the same process for the Vice Chair. Does that make sense to everybody?
Yep.
Thank you. And...
And then will you stop recording for a minute, Allison? Or, yeah, you got what I was trying to say.
Presenting, yeah.
So...
Okay. All right, Andrea, we're doing it via thumbs up right after...
We're going to do the vote via thumbs up once we have the nominations.
Okay, sounds good. So...
I see a hand from Carolyn.
All right.
I'm just refining this procedure. Am I supposed to use the raise hand even for making a nomination? Is that the way things go for everything tonight? You can, it's kind of up to how you guys decide to run it. All right. I'll just wait for instructions from...
Okay, I'll ask for a nomination now for Chair. And, okay, I see Benny's hand, Commissioner Mitchum, and then Carolyn. So we'll take Commissioner Mitchum first and then Commissioner Boatsman.
I nominate, this is Jennifer Mitchum, I nominate Dan Hubbell for Chair.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Mitchum. And Commissioner Boatsman, did you have a different nomination?
Yes, I would like to nominate Ted Weinberg for Chair.
Okay, thank you. So I'm just looking, yes.
And I want to also nominate Jennifer Mitchum.
For Chair as well? Okay, let me write that down. So we have...
So we have Dan, Ted.
Dan, Ted, and Jenny. Okay, wonderful, thank you, everyone. Is there anyone else? I think I'm looking at everyone. All right, so first of all, we'll go ahead and... For Dan, thumbs up? Or, how many? Sorry, let me be clear. So now we're voting on the nomination of Dan for Chair. How many do we have? One, two, three? Okay, we have five, so we're good.
Yeah, there.
Dan Hubbell is the new Chair. Take it away, Dan.
And I assume that's okay with you, Dan?
Well, I voted for myself. I don't know what I was thinking, but... But yes, I guess that is good. I also am... Do have a view to the fact that it doesn't look like we're going to be super busy for the next six months just given the world of what we're in right now. So hopefully it won't be too burdensome of an action. And before we continue for the nominations for Vice Chair, I would like to just take a moment and thank Tiffany Goodman for leading us for the last... It's been, what, two years now that you've been the Chair? So I just want to extend my thanks to your leadership with the team and really appreciate the work that you've put in supporting us. So, thank you.
That's very kind of you. Thank you.
Tiffany, you're a rock star!
Thanks, everyone. All right, let's look forward to it.
Great job!
Yeah, all right. So with that, our next order of business is nominations for the Vice Chair. And so we'll follow the same procedure. We'll call for nominations. I will write them down in the order that they are given. And the first person, we will then ask for votes in that order and the first person to receive four votes will be the new Vice Chair. So with that, are there any nominations for Vice Chair? Commissioner Goodman.
I'll nominate Commissioner Mitchum.
Okay. Are there any other... Jenny?
I nominate Ken Weinberg.
Okay. Are there any other nominations for Vice Chair? Seeing none. We will go ahead and start with the first name that was put forth. All of those in favor of Jenny serving as Vice Chair, please signify by raising your thumb. Why not? It looks like we have... Oh, we've got it unanimous. Thanks, Ted. And it looks like that was unanimous at seven to zero. So thank you all. And Jenny, thank you for being a good sport and playing along with me. All right, Andrea, it looks like the next item of business is the review and adoption of the Planning Commission bylaws. Would you like to lead us through that, please?
Yes, Allison, can you bring that PowerPoint back up, please? So there were no staff-proposed changes to the bylaws and these were the same bylaws that were approved by the Commission in July of 2019. The bylaws can be amended by a majority vote of the entire Commission. So we would need at least four votes if you guys wanted to make an amendment to the bylaws. So then we just need a motion by a commissioner to approve the Design Commission bylaws. Or if there's...
Planning Commission bylaws.
Moved by Lucia.
Well, it was Planning Commission. You said Design Commission.
Oh, that's because I missed changing it on the thing. Planning Commission bylaws.
I'll... That motion?
Sorry, was that moved by Ted and seconded by Carolyn?
Yes, I did second the motion. That's Carolyn speaking.
Great, thank you, Carolyn. So I have a motion by Commissioner Weinberg and seconded by Commissioner Boatsman to approve the Design Commission bylaws. Are there any discussion, comments, or amendments that would like to be proposed? All right, hearing none and I see...
Dan, sorry, it's Tiffany. I don't... I missed the technical hand raise.
I can't see all of the...
Let me try to do an actual hand raise. There we go.
I need to put my thing over there. Yes, go ahead, Tiffany.
I had two comments. The first one was I thought that the council process for naming commissioners had changed slightly this year. And so if that's the case, I just wanted that to be updated accordingly.
Correct, it did change. It is now a recommendation from the whole council.
Okay, so that seems like an easy one. And then my other, it was just kind of a thought. If, for example, the Chair is no longer at the meeting and the Vice Chair, who would conduct the elections? I think this happened a couple of years ago because sometimes, you know, the Chair or Vice Chair will roll off and then the next meeting you have a new person. So I was going to maybe recommend just saying a staff member could conduct the elections or whatever seems appropriate.
Do you know where you want to put that? Where does that go?
Um, let's see. I have to read through it. It's a section 2.4. So in section 2.4, so normally the Chair would conduct the nominations, which I think is fine if the, you know, sitting Chair is present in the meeting but... Or the outgoing Chair rather, but if not, you know, perhaps there should be a backup. I think this happened a couple of years ago when both the Chair and the Vice Chair, their terms ended. So they weren't at the following meeting.
Is that Richard and Suzanne?
I think...
Yeah. And I don't even remember how it was. It's really not a big deal. I just think that it would make sense to put something in there.
So Andrea, as far as the first one is concerned, are we confident that we don't really need to move an amendment specifically for the first thing? Because the council, they're the ones that actually made the update. So technically, we're just ratifying what they've already updated.
Correct, and that was just an error on my part. I thought I had changed that, but what got included in the packet didn't include that.
Sure. And then the second one, Commissioner Goodman has just an idea of clarifying the language there. Do you need a specific language from us with like a subsection? Or is an amendment to the effect of just adding that language to the appropriate subsection? Would that suffice enough for action?
I believe that would suffice enough for action.
Great.
As long as we can kind of nail down what it is we want to include, the staff can facilitate the election if neither of the... Gosh, my brain's not working.
If the Chair and Vice Chair...
Or Vice Chair are not there, yes.
Sure. So Commissioner Goodman, would you like to just phrase that quickly as an amendment? And we'll get a second. And then, again, it can be at that general level that we just need to include that language and then we'll take...
And just to clarify, I would only need an amendment for the second one because the first one is more of a housekeeping item?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
This is just related to the Chair and Vice Chair being not present?
Certainly, I'll make an amendment that if the Chair and Vice Chair are not present for the annual elections, then a staff member may conduct the elections.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, so that was moved by Commissioner Goodman and seconded by Commissioner Weinberg. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion to that effect? I think it was pretty clear what the intent was.
I'm sorry, Commission, I missed who moved and seconded that.
It was Commissioner Goodman moved and Commissioner Weinberg seconded.
Allison, will you stop sharing your screen so we can do the vote if they're ready for that?
All right, hearing no further discussion, all in favor of the amendment as presented, please signify by raising your thumb. Any opposed, please make yourself known. And it passes seven to zero. The amendment. And so that will bring us back to the main motion of approving the Planning Commission bylaws as they have been amended. Are there any further discussion or comments? Okay. Hearing none, all in favor of approval of the Planning Commission bylaws, please signify by raising your hand. Thank you. And any disapproving? There were seven that said yes, so that I have to ask anyway. So that passes seven to zero. Is there anything else that you need there, Andrea?
No, Chair, that is all.
Great. All right, that brings us to item number three and that is approval of the minutes of February 5th, 2020. And I have to say, I have no recollection of this meeting. So I'm going to rely on others to provide any feedback on any updates that may need to happen. So if I could please have a motion for approval of the minutes of February 5th, 2020.
I will move to adopt the minutes from February, whatever it was.
Great, I have a motion from Commissioner Boatsman. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Pritsio Bireoli. Are there any corrections, updates, or errors that we need to look at? Okay, hearing none, all in favor of approval of the minutes from February 5th, 2020, please signify by raising your thumb.
I'll need to abstain because I wasn't there.
All right. All... All those opposed? There was none and we have one abstention from Commissioner Weinberg.
So I think we had two abstentions?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
Because I wasn't there.
You're right, thank you very much, Commissioner Murphy. So the minutes are approved, five to... It's five to zero, is that the way you run the abstentions, Andrea?
It's five to zero to two.
There you go. Now I feel like I'm an announcer for the NFL. Excellent. And I apologize, I see in your script that you wanted a roll call, but is that going to suffice for you, Andrea?
Yes, that will suffice.
Jenny?
Oh, hi, yes, Jenny?
Jenny.
I just wanted to... I'm sure all the other commissioners would join me in welcoming Mike Murphy to the Commission. If I missed it and you were officially welcomed earlier, please forgive me for repeating it. But welcome, we're glad to have you with us and look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Yay!
Have you, Mike. Hooray! Thank you.
Okay.
Yes, welcome, Commissioner Murphy. And we had the pleasure of meeting for a few minutes during our tech check on Monday, the two of us. So I look forward to having you onboard. And it's, of course, somewhat weird being in this format, but I think we've now, after nine or 10 months, at least, maybe partially started to get used to things. So, great, thank you, everybody, for approval of the minutes. And we are now at the part of the agenda where we would recognize appearances. Tonight's agenda will not include in-person public appearances accordance in accordance with Proclamation 20-28 dot 11 and the Governor's Extended Safe Start Order. We do, however, provide for individuals wishing to speak live during the appearance portion of our meeting via Zoom. And they had until 4:00 PM today to indicate their desire to do that. And our senior admin will call upon their names if they so choose. And Andrea, please clarify, you said that there was no one that indicated that they were here to speak, correct?
That is correct. We had no one sign up to speak in appearances tonight.
Great. So with that, for those of you that are watching either recorded or via Zoom, you may feel free to send email to the city clerk. There's also an email address for the Planning Commission in which all of us would be submitted. If you do have comments that you would like to submit, I please encourage you to do that electronically. I do know and would like to recognize that we have had a few comments that have come in and I believe that everyone has had the opportunity to review those. So just want to be clear that in this digital world, as always, we embrace all forms of feedback from the community. So that brings us to, I have to scroll down a little bit, to a regular business. And we are on, it's not numbered, but I would assume that since the other was number three, this would be number five, since appearances would be four. Review of the 2020 Comprehensive Plan and Development Code Amendment Preliminary Docket. And we have with us this evening CPD Deputy Director Allison Van Corp, who will be giving us a brief presentation and she will go over the process for reviewing all of these docket suggestions. Welcome, Allison, and it's great to see you virtually.
Thank you, Commissioner Hubbell. Yeah, it's been a few years, I think, since I've been in front of the Commission. So happy to be back. Since Evan's departure over the summer, I've taken over quite a bit of the legislative and policy work for CPD. So I think it's likely that you'll be seeing me more often going forward. All right, let me share my screen quickly. One moment. All right. Oh, now I went back to the beginning. Okay, here we go. Um, all right, so this is our once-a-year opportunity to review the docket and this is a chance for the public to submit their ideas for both Comprehensive Plan and Development Code amendments. This will be our first year using the docket for code amendments. We've, of course, done it previously for the Comprehensive Plan. So tonight, the Commission will be conducting a preliminary review of the proposed items and making a recommendation to the City Council on the final docket. The City Council would then select the items that they want to place on the final docket and those will be added to the CPD work plan for next year. And many of these items would come back to the Planning Commission next year should they be placed on the final docket. Okay, so the code does give direction on the procedure here. Public notice needs to be provided September 1st and amendments were due by October 1st. However, this year, that deadline was extended to November 2nd. There was a small error in the notice that went out in August and the code amendment piece was omitted. So we made the decision to renotice and extend the deadline to ensure that the community had ample time to submit both types of amendments, code amendments and comprehensive amendments. So like I was saying, the Planning Commission has a chance to make a review and a recommendation and then the City Council has until December 31st to establish the final docket. And then those items become the work plan and they help us determine resource needs for making those amendments next year. The code also dictates some specific criteria for docketing and it says that all of these criteria must be met. So the proposed amendment needs to present a matter that's appropriately addressed through the Comprehensive Plan or the code. The city has available the resources, including staff and budget, necessary to review the proposal or those resources can be provided by the applicant. The proposal does not raise policy or land use issues that are more appropriately addressed by an ongoing work program item approved by the City Council. The proposal will serve the public interest by implementing specifically identified goals of the Comprehensive Plan or a new approach supporting the city's vision. And the essential elements of the proposal and proposed outcome have not been considered by the City Council in the last three years. And the City Council does have the ability to waive that three-year limit if they think the circumstances justify it. So I guess keep those criteria in mind. I have a summarized version of this when we get to actually going through the proposals to help you remember what those criteria are. I also wanted to note, since we haven't met with this Commission for some time, there were some significant staffing changes in CPD over the summer. We had a big reduction across the department and the planning team was reduced from five staff to two. We later added one planner back in a temporary role. So we currently have three planners right now. The City Council is still deliberating the budget for next year, including the staffing proposals. So we're anticipating that we'll likely have three planning positions and possibly a fourth position as a policy analyst that would start mid-year next year. So we're looking at about three and a half FTE next year potentially, if that's what council ends up approving. So there is a significant reduction in staffing from what we've had in the past and we know that we'll need to scale back the policy and legislative work that we're doing in response to that staffing change. So I just wanted you all to be aware of that since one of the criteria is directly related to staffing so that as we look through these proposals, you understand that the amount of work we can take on will be a bit less than what we've done in the past. Okay. As we get into the docket review, I wanted to remind you there's a summary table of all the preliminary items on pages 19 and 20 in the packet if you want to get that high-level overview. I'm going to go through and give a brief overview of each of the items and I can pause for any questions or comments on each item. So if anyone has clarifying questions or wants to discuss a certain component, yes, Commissioner Pritsio Bireoli?
I have a broad question because it was on my understanding that we were going to go through a complete review and rewrite of the Comprehensive Plan this year. I mean, wasn't that, isn't that mandated by the state?
The state has delayed that. It's now due in 2024 and we're planning to start that process at the end of 2022.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Boatsman? You're muted. Commissioner Boatsman, you're on mute. Carolyn? You're muted and we cannot hear you.
I'm sorry. I'm...
Um, in regards to the staffing, I want to make sure I understand it remains basically the same in 2021, three, but possibly the additional position of analyst. Is that correct?
That's correct. The council's created additional position and they've discussed having it start midway through the year.
Okay, thank you.
No problem. Any other questions? Okay. Um, so after we finish going through the initial overview of all of the suggested amendments and any questions, then we're proposing a consensus process to decide on which items the commission would like to move forward onto the docket. We're going to do two rounds and on the first round, it'll be kind of the lightning round. So we want to just do an initial go through and see where we may have majority consensus to move an item forward. So we'll just name each item and ask council members to do the thumbs up if you would like to move the item onto the docket without further discussion. If you do want further discussion or you don't want to move the item onto the docket, you can do a thumbs down or even just don't put your thumbs up. We'll be counting, we'll be counting the thumbs up. And if we have four or more thumbs up, the item will move immediately onto the docket and we won't further discuss it tonight.
And then, sorry, Allison, I just want to clarify for everyone, just so that it's clear sort of the purpose behind this. The, the docketting process is literally for, and for Commissioner Murphy, who may not have been through this before. All we're literally deciding tonight is whether or not these are topics that we should have further discussion about during the course of the year. And so while I know a number of these, we'll have a whole bunch of conversation around them. Tonight, we're literally just deciding, should we or should we not? And if we have consensus that it should be on our work plan for the year, there isn't much reason to have any more discussion beyond that. So if you do, if you are in favor, and if we do have four votes in the affirmative for it, I would just ask for the sake of the ones where I do know that we will probably have some discussion, that we just move on and know that we're going to be coming back to those during the course of the year. Tricia Weinberg?
And I presume if we, if we don't put a thumbs up, that doesn't mean that it's gone. It just means that we're going to be discussing it. It's not automatically.
Correct. I was about to. So once we've gone through that initial round and we found kind of the low hanging fruit, we've put them onto the docket immediately. We'll then come back and go through everything else. So all the items that didn't receive four or more thumbs up, we'll go through on the second round, one by one. We'll have further discussion of what the item is, the merits of it. Commissioners could make a case one way or the other if they choose. And we'll do a second round of thumbs up on each item. At that point, we will have kind of our preliminary docket done. And we will ask for a motion and commissioners could either move to adopt that list as is or they could, an amendment could be proposed. So they could add on or remove items by amendment at that point. And we do want to have a motion and roll call vote at the end to formalize this. All right. Does everyone understand that process? Great. Okay, so I'm going to just proceed with going through each of the amendments. I'm giving you a pretty high level overview, but feel free to ask questions or make comments to clarify what the amendment is about or, or anything like that. Okay, so the first five were proposed by staff. Number one is a pretty simple correction in the Comprehensive Plan to the Land Use Plan map. It corrects an error, basically a Scrivener's error that was made in a prior comp plan amendment. And it concerns the designation of the South End Shopping Center. It was accidentally changed to commercial office rather than neighborhood business. And so we need to switch that designation back on the map. I think this is a pretty straightforward and simple code amendment or Comprehensive Plan amendment and should only take minimal time to, to move through the hoops to be approved. Are there any questions on that one?
Nope.
Are we, sorry, Allison, did you want, is now the point when you want us to signify that we're good sending it through? Or are you going to come back and?
I was planning to come back, but if people would prefer to just vote now, I mean, I know some of these are fairly straightforward. That could be fine, too.
Um, I would just say for, let's, we'll just take a vote now and if, then we can come back to the other ones and I can help keep track here.
I wanted to make a suggestion that we consider this concurrently with amendment eight, because they're basically the same thing.
Yeah, that was going to be my recommendation, recommendation on amendment eight. They are essentially the exact same thing. And so they can definitely be combined into one item.
Okay.
So is everybody good with saying that this should be moved forward? Okay, we have at least five or at least four. So yes, we'll move that one forward.
Thank you. Okay, so number two. This one is basically a placeholder. The city council has asked the staff to look at the retail requirements in town center and whether they should be expanded to the south side of town center. There's currently an interim ordinance in place with a moratorium on development in that south end of the town center. And so this amendment, these potential amendments would be part of resolving that interim ordinance if the council decides that they want to make any changes to the code of the comp plan in relation to the town center regulations in general or the retail requirements. So this is, I'm not sure if this will move forward, but we wanted to have a placeholder there and let the community know that we're considering this.
Yeah, that was going to be my ask, Allison, was there? Because it seemed to be pretty nondescript about what actually the work was going to be there. So this is strictly a placeholder in case the council decides to remand some work to us related to this.
Correct. So the council is considering a budget item that would allow us to hire a consultant to do some economic analysis of retail in the town center. And based on those findings, they may decide to do a code amendment or not.
Great. Do I have a, any other questions? And then if not, can I get a raise of thumbs for who is good with moving this forward to the docket? Okay, I see five. Great.
Okay, item number three. Okay, this one is related to impact fees. We are looking to update the existing parks and transportation impact fees. And the council has also stated an interest in adopting a new fire impact fee to help offset, offset costs of providing fire service for new development. So to do this, we need to do new rate studies and then there's code amendments associated with it as well. So again, this is a placeholder for those code amendments that would be needed if the impact fees are updated and if the fire, the fire impact fee is added.
Are there any clarifying questions? Otherwise, if you feel like we need to have more conversation around it, then just vote no, and then we'll come back and have conversation. Otherwise, if you'd like to move this forward to the docket with no further discussion, please raise your hand. I have four. All right, that's enough.
Fine question.
Yes, Jenny?
Um, if council does not decide to go in and do an analysis of the fee, or if they did, if they decide that's not something they want to do, then this essentially also becomes a placeholder, correct?
It's correct.
Thanks.
I believe these ones will move forward, just based on the conversation so far, but it is just a placeholder at this point.
Okay, and it looks like we had four people and ingredients that we can move that forward. So, so we'll just move forward without any further discussion.
Thank you. Okay, so amendment four, this concerns the sign regulations. And so case law over the last five years has addressed some First Amendment issues and basically found that sign regulations cannot refer to the content of the sign. So our regulations are currently not in compliance with this. We have sections of the code that refer to or distinguish between political signs and other kinds of signs. And we don't believe this is in compliance with the case law. So this is a pretty important amendment that we need to do to mitigate the city's risk and bring us in line with where the Supreme Court has ruled on these issues. This, the planning commission began consideration of a code amendment around this area in the winter of 2020. But that was paused or put on hold because of the pandemic. And so we'll need to restart this work in 2021. And it will require a moderate amount of staff and commission and council of resources.
Okay, all in favor of adding this to the plan? Okay, I have six, so we'll go ahead and move forward on that one.
Okay, amendment five, this is for the wireless and small cell regulations. Similar to the sign code, this is one the commission began last winter and it was paused. And this would help to bring, we have a existing interim ordinance that needs to be resolved. So it would adopt permanent regulations and help to align our local regulations with FCC rules. Just to clarify which areas the FCC has control over and which areas we can regulate with our, our local code, local code. And we'll also add some definitions and new terms and basically update things to the modern standards. So again, we started this earlier this year and restarting in 2021 will require some additional resources. But it's fairly important.
Okay, all in favor of adding this to the docket? Looks like we've got four, five, six. So great, we'll move that one forward.
I just wanted to mention that Commissioner Goodman, the, your thumb was kind of off the side of this, off the camera. So he couldn't see, I, I think you were voting yes on that one, right?
Um, I did vote yes. Sorry, I can't see myself, so I'll turn it and you can let me know if that's better.
Put it up. When you, when you do it, Tiffin, we can see your left shoulder, so just hold your thumb up by your shoulder. Like more back by your shoulder. There you go. Yep.
Oh, how weird. I'll try to figure if I can see myself to see what you're looking at. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, now I'm going to start going through the amendments that came in from the community. The first couple are from Matthew Goldbach. And this first one concerns implementation of Comprehensive Plan amendments. And it would repeal one section of the code to ensure that the code does not condone a future failure of the city to ensure that Comprehensive Plan policies are implemented by consistent development regulations. So this area of the code was subject to a growth management hearings board case a year or two ago. And basically, the short story is the city does not agree with Mr. Goldbach's interpretation of the findings from the growth management hearings board. And we don't believe that this code amendment is necessary. Basically, yeah, it. Sorry, losing my train of thought.
I think you ran the last bullet there, Allison.
Yeah, so if this was going to be placed on the docket, it would take some staff and planning commission and city council, council resources to, to make the amendment.
Okay. And so, and again, we would indicate now if there's consensus to move this on to the docket, indicate by raising your thumb. And if not, we will come back and discuss it. Okay, it looks like we'll come back and discuss that one further.
Okay, number seven was also proposed by Matthew Goldbach. Um, oh, and there's a typo here. This is a conditional use permit information. So the conditionally CUP. And this would add a new subsection, subsection to this part of the code, clarifying that CUPs are only applicable to the property for which it was granted. So I think this was referring to situations where a CUP might be placed on one property and then subsequently, at some point in the future, that property owner may acquire adjacent or nearby parcels of land. So staff believes this suggestion is unnecessary. Other already existing code provisions make it clear that CUPs only apply to the parcels that were on the application form when the CUP was applied for. But if we did move forward with this amendment, it would take some staff, planning commission and city council resources to, to do the amendment.
Okay. Is there sufficient clarity that I have votes for moving this on to the docket? Please indicate now, otherwise we'll come back and discuss further at the end. Okay, looks like we'll come back to that one.
Okay, amendment eight is also from Matt Goldbach. This is the one that we discussed a bit earlier. It is essentially the same as amendment one, which you've already voted to move on to the docket. So I would recommend that since this one's duplicative, it's not also advanced.
Okay, so you're, sorry, to be clear, Allison, you're recommending that we not advance this in, but in support of the fact that it is actually a duplicate to a staff recommendation from, that we already voted on. Great. Okay, so with that context, is there anybody that would like to vote to move this forward to the docket? Okay, we'll come back later for a formal vote on this and discussion, but we won't move it forward right now.
Okay, amendment nine was proposed by Commissioner Boatsman. And it refers to the nuisance control code. And she suggested making amendments to this code to limit commercial landscaping operations using power tools to the same hours as construction noise from work under city permits. And to require that residential use of spotlighting be directed toward the owner's property. So my comments on this were that the city does not currently regulate these issues. I mentioned in the staff report that we do sometimes have complaints about these kind of issues. Not super frequently, but a few times a year. I think one comment would be that perhaps this kind of amendment might be better considered as a larger update to the nuisance code, which is not currently in our near-term work plan, but something that has come up several times in the past is an area that does, that could be used some updates because it's fairly old, is a fairly old code and doesn't always address things in the way that we might want under today's more modern ways of thinking. So I think most of the nuisance and animal codes would be ripe for a larger redo at some point. We are planning to look at the code compliance code update and do check back on that in the next couple of years. And so this could happen in conjunction with that, maybe, I don't know. I just wanted to give some of that context. Since these are fairly specific. And, you know, limited kinds of amendments. Um, that's about all I have to say about that right now.
Um, okay, so just given the context that we have now, do we have consensus? Raise your hand if you feel like there's enough here that we should immediately move this forward. Otherwise, we'll come back and have discussion about it. I have three, is there a fourth? Okay, so we'll come back and revisit this and we'll have some conversation.
Okay, amendment ten, also from Carolyn Boatsman. This one pertains to the Comprehensive Plan. And she suggested adopting goals and policies related to the prioritization of the use of public right of way based on the public good. This is, that should at least be allowed and included in the priority are roads and appurtenances, utility installation, residential parking, although I think that was changed to temporary parking, and environmental benefit. I talked about this a little bit in the staff report, but there's currently a process, though it's not addressed in the Comprehensive Plan, this various staff members that have roles related to the right of way work closely together. Whenever they're reviewing a development proposal that would affect the right of way to do kind of a case-specific analysis of how those uses should be prioritized and located within the right of way. So for me, it was unclear how the Comprehensive Plan policy or goal would improve on that current process. Perhaps Commissioner Boatsman may want to speak to her thoughts there. The actual amendment was very brief, so the proposal was very brief, so we could use. Perhaps Commissioner Boatsman may want to speak to her thoughts there. The actual amendment was very brief, so the proposal was very brief, so we could use some more information perhaps. And again, this would take some staff, planning commission and city council resources where we need to go ahead and amend, let's just say, the comprehensive plan.
Yeah. Might I suggest, because I know you raised your hand, Commissioner Boatsman, that I'll take a tally to see if there's enough information, if people are okay with just moving this forward, and if people feel like they need more context, then we'll come back and I'll give you a chance, Commissioner Boatsman, to go through, yes.
I do want to point out a misprint. The word residential is supposed to be temporary, temporary parking, okay? So. I thought that should be clarified at this point.
Yeah, no, that's a good clarification. I know it's in the, the, the report that in our packet, but I see it wasn't fixed here, so that's, that's a good catch. Okay, so if you're good with moving this forward, please raise your hand if you'd like more conversation, then then leave your hand down and we'll talk more about it. So I have three in favor. Okay, so we'll come back and discuss this a little bit more at the end.
Okay, now we're moving on to the last six or so that were proposed by Daniel Thompson. These all pertain to either the residential development standards or the procedural standards that were adopted shortly after the RDS. And so this first one is related to ceiling height and it would reduce the ceiling height from 12 feet to 10 feet before it counted as clear story space, 150%, 50% of gross floor area. So essentially that would reduce the amount of gross, gross floor area for vaulted ceilings or clear stories. Um, so for all of these ones from Daniel Thompson, the staff recommendation was that these should be evaluated and considered after exact the review of the residential development standards and administrative code amendments, which we're planning to do in 2022. So when council adopted these regulations, they asked that we come back with a full review of the effect and success of these amendments and whether they were achieving the intended results. And so we're planning to come back with that, that review and report to council in early 2022. And so our recommendation, there's, I think, six amendments here that relate to those two code updates. And we believe they should be considered comprehensively once that review has been completed. Rather than making several piecemeal updates right before we do that review.
Okay, thank you, Allison. Do I have four votes in favor of moving this forward? Otherwise, we'll bring this back for conversation. I see one vote in favor, so we'll bring this back for conversation.
Okay, number 12, again from Daniel Thompson, and again, related to the residential development standards. This one would include covered decks in the definition of gross floor area and and include covered porches on the first floor, the first level in the calculation of GFA. And again, same recommendation as the last one, we believe this would be better considered as a part of a more comprehensive look at the residential development standards.
Okay, given this, do I have any votes in favor of placing this immediately on to the docket? Please raise your hand. I have one. Okay, great, we'll come back for conversation.
Okay, 13, also residential development standards. And this would eliminate the ability to build garages and carports within 10 feet of the property line in the front yard. Or alternatively, would eliminate the option for waterfront lots that have flipped their front and backyards per this code section that applies to waterfront properties. So basically, right now they, they can put their, the garage or the carport very close to the front yard, and he's suggesting eliminating that ability. And like, like what the others were recommending this, I'll be looked at comprehensively.
Okay. Do I have anyone who votes in favor of placing this immediately on the docket? Okay, I see none, so we'll come back for discussion.
Okay, number 14, another RDS. This one would limit the gross floor area incentives for ADUs, accessory dwelling units, to lots that are 8,400 square feet or smaller. So that incentive would not be available for larger lots. And again, I'd recommend that this be considered comprehensively when we do that bigger look at RDS.
Okay. All in favor of advancing this immediately, please signify by raising your thumb. Okay, we will come back and discuss it.
Okay, number 15, this one pertains to the administrative code. This was the part of the code where it put all land use reviews into different types. There's four types. And each of those types has specific procedures for things like noticing and appeals. And so this amendment is suggesting that the type classifications of some, several permit actions should be changed. With the effect that the public notification or public notice requirements would also be changed. And again, I think we're proposing that this section of the administrative code with the typing and noticing should be reviewed alongside the residential development standards. The noticing requirements in particular have been subject to many public comments. And I think they've also resulted in a lot of additional staff work that was not initially well-understood when, when these were adopted and it needs to be considered in the situation we're in now with reduced staff. So similar to what I said on the other.
Allison, can, can you just, can you? Analysis. Can, can you restate that last statement again, that you were saying that there was some unanticipated?
Yeah, so noticing, we are now doing notice of application and notice of decision on a lot of building permits and, and land use approvals and is a fairly large amount of staff work. We produce signs and mailings in large numbers. And, you know, when this was adopted, we knew there would be staff impacts, but it wasn't, we weren't sure how big they would be. And so when we initially started doing all this additional noticing, we thought we would just see how it went. And then if we needed additional staff, we could ask for it later. But that has not happened over the years. And so at the point we're at now with less staff and still having all of these noticing requirements, it is becoming more burdensome to get it done, and we need to consider that. Like, I think, looking at how we balance having appropriate amount of public notice and opportunity for neighbors and the public to comment on projects with the amount of staff work that's involved.
Got it. Okay, you just had cut out a little bit on me, so I wanted to make sure I understood everything that you had said. Okay, so I'll take a quick poll of people who are in favor of immediately moving this forward to the docket. Otherwise, we will bring this back for discussion if I can get an indication that you want to move this forward. Okay, seeing none, we'll come back.
Looks like I neglected to change that. It's supposed to be number 16. So this is the final one, and it's from Dan Thompson. It relates to the residential development standards. And this would reduce the threshold for requiring only two parking spots from 3,000 square feet to 2,000 square feet. So for small homes, there's a provision where they can have one less parking spot than other homes. And so he's saying this should be reduced to even smaller homes from 3,000 square feet to 2,000 square feet. And again, we would just recommend that this be considered as a more comprehensive look at the residential development standards.
Okay. Hearing that recommendation, are there anybody in favor of moving this immediately forward to the docket? Okay, I have one. Okay, great, we will bring it back and we will discuss.
Okay.
So it looks like there are 11 that, well, let me start, go back this way. It looks like numbers one through five. I have affirmative action that we will move those to the motion immediately with no further discussion. And it looks like items six through 16, which are 11 items, we will need to go through individually and have a, have a conversation on each of these. I'm gonna need two things. First, we need to start by getting a motion on the table for approval of the docket. And then either Allison or Andrea, how would you like us to approach the remaining 11? Is a thumbs up, thumbs down vote appropriate, or do you want a roll call vote on each of the 11?
We can do thumbs up and thumbs down on these, and then I would like to do a roll call vote once we have the final list to just, you know, the final approval and recommendation to council by motion.
Great.
And I think we can wait on the formal motion until we've gotten the list kind of down to whatever you guys want it to be.
Great, and then the motion can just include the numbers that we have agreed to.
Correct, which I'm also tracking.
Great, sounds good. Yeah, I have my little tally here. I feel like I'm sports betting right now with my little marks on the sheet. Commissioner Weinberg, you have a question?
Yeah, so we ran into this problem a couple of years ago when we were going through the comprehensive plan amendments in 2018. And we created a motion for the whole kit and caboodle. And then we talked about each individual one, so that if somebody wanted to vote against an individual comprehensive pack item, you had to essentially vote against the whole thing. I would recommend that we vote on each one individually instead, so that is, we don't have to vote against the entire thing.
Yeah, you're, you're exactly right. That's what the plan is going to be, and, and the way we're going to do it, rather than calling it a formal vote, is that we're gonna, we're going to do a consensus vote, which is the thumbs up. So we're going to look at it and have a conversation one by one. So we're going to go through the list that we just went through. We're going to have conversation about each one, and at the end of that conversation, we are going to get a consensus vote. If we have four votes with consensus, it will be included on the, on the docket that moves to the motion. If it does not, if it fails that consensus vote, it will not be included on the motion when we make it.
Right, but there, you're saying that there's still going to be one vote at the end of the night for the motion, which has things on it that some people will have voted against. So unless they want to have it recorded that they voted for something that they were, that had pieces on it they were against, people will be voting no on that last one, right? I, I think we're better off having a yesterday vote on each individual one and not having a vote for the whole thing.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying. We're taking a vote on each one that we're going to place on the docket, and then there will always be some dissent on a couple, and you're at your will if you decide there's one that didn't make it on or did make it on, and you decide to vote against the entire motion, you know, that's, that's your prerogative. We will go through each one however, and take a vote as to which ones we're going to include on the list, which I think is what you're asking. So Commissioner Boatsman. You're on mute again, Carol.
In support of what Ted is asking for, I think when we get all done figuring out what we want to recommend in this docket, based on four votes per item, at least, it would still not be clear for the record, you know, who voted for what. So I know it would be more work to have a roll call vote for each item. But I, I don't think it would be that much more work where we couldn't accommodate what Ted is suggesting. One caveat, possibly the first five could be lumped together if they turn out to be seven in favor, but the remaining ones, could we not take a roll call vote for each? Each one?
Again, I don't know if we need a roll call, but what I will do is as we do a thumbs up vote, I will say, you know, the following commissioners have voted yes, and the following commissioners have voted no. That way it can be on the record as to who made which votes, if that's how you would like.
And commissioners, just as a reminder, historically, when voting, it doesn't list who voted for what. It is, there were five yes votes, two no votes. So just for something else to keep in mind.
Commissioner Boatsman.
One further clarification. So having thrown into the mix what I was talking about, Ted. Is that understanding what it was that you wanted, or I'm not sure?
I, well, we're still going to end up with a vote at the end of the night for the overall docket. And there will be probably at least some of us that will see things on the docket that they don't want to see there. And they'll either have to vote against the whole docket or vote for the, what was a majority approved essentially on the, on those pieces. So, I mean, yeah, we, we will be voting each one individually, so there will be on record which ones people were opposed to.
Okay.
There will also, will also be a vote at the ends that could be taken out of context to mean that somebody voted for things that they didn't want. So I just wish that we were only voting on each one individually, rather than having one big vote at the end for the whole docket.
Yeah, I mean, it's unfortunate that, because the construct here is that the docket is a document. And so we have to vote on the approval of the document that we're sending forward that will include a number of items. And so we're going to take individual action on each of the items that we wish to include, but we do have to take a formal action on the docket as a construct that gets sent to the commission. So it's, it's somewhat of a formal process. I totally get what you're saying. It's not unusual, however, in the process of, you know, policymaking, that that's sort of how we have to, to run it, because this is a formal process that we have to follow.
And other thing to remember, go ahead, Allison.
All right, when we get to that point of making the motion, if a commissioner feels that they would like to make a final attempt to, to test or sway the, the position of the commission as a whole, they could propose an amendment to the motion and see if they can get a second and the votes to carry the amendment forward.
Yeah. Commissioner Metzger?
I also just wanted to point out that for those who are concerned that their vote at the very end for the whole document might be construed as the vote for or against different items within the docket, if they lost a majority vote on specific items. Always have the option of specifically stating that they are voting for the whole docket, but that they retain an objection to certain items within it or to the lack of inclusion of certain items within it. Because I have a feeling that what you're looking for is public record of who voted for and against each of the specific items. I think you can make a comment about that. This meeting is public record. Anyone who is interested in your position can go through the meeting and see what was said by home.
Great, and then Commissioner Goodman, so you had your hand.
I did. I hate to foremention this, but I do think maybe at the last year when we did the overall comprehensive plan amendments, we did take them one by one with a motion to avoid this specific problem. I don't know if anyone else remembers the process, but I remember we were trying to avoid kind of this specific issue of concern. And so I don't know if staff can weigh in on this, but I actually don't know if you have to have one overall motion or if you can do them separately.
You know. We, we can send 15 separate motions to, to the council. There's no rule against it.
So I mean, it is more cumbersome. I, I don't, maybe Commissioner Weinberg, is, is there an in-between that would be satisfactory to just make sure that any commissioner that has sort of a differing opinion than the way the vote goes, you know, is, is stated adequately on the record?
Well, I'm just concerned that something could be taken out of context. I, I think that we should have one vote on each of the, of the amendments, and that should we should have one vote on each, uh, of the, uh, of the amendments and that should be, uh, the only votes taken on that amendment. I, I don't think that we should have a, a, then a second vote at the end that's for all the ones that got passed. But, um, so it's up to you.
So, look, I, I, not having BO here to ask for a, uh, legal interpretation of this, um, you know, we have, uh, staff whom I, uh, first of all, I've been doing this for upwards of, of 20 years now on numbers of commissions in a couple of different cities and I have always had, um, these put together, you may make individual, individual votes on components, but the, um, but the final motion sort of is the, the final motion. So I think, um, what I'd like to do is continue with the plan that we have. We are gonna discuss each. We're gonna take a, a vote on each as to whether or not they're included in the, um, final docket. And we will, um, take a motion, uh, for that final docket and to the comments that were made. Uh, you're more than at your liberty to, uh, during your vote, indicate, um, your rationale for, uh, you know, whatever minority report that you may have on, um, on either for or against, uh, the motion at, at the end. I think that will suffice for what you're trying to accomplish, which is establish a record of your, um, position. So we're gonna look at each of these individually and, uh, we'll walk through, we've got 11 of them. So, um, you know, if we, if we, uh, have a timer of 10 minutes on each, it's still, it's gonna be another two hours worth of time. I don't think we're gonna need that much time. But, uh, I do wanna just keep an eye to, um, to the clock, uh, in all of this, since there are a number to go through. I might also suggest, as, uh, one second, Commissioner Boatsman, um, as was indicated earlier in the evening, I'll do a cycle of, uh, each person for a question comment. Um, and then we'll give everyone a second opportunity to, um, reply. If we don't have at that point a consensus to either move it forward or to not move it forward, then we'll do a third round from, uh, from there if necessary, but, um, I, I wanna just try to be as fair as possible. The format is kinda hard to jump around, so I wanna make sure that we'll call everyone out to have an opportunity to make a comment. Um, and Commissioner Boatsman, you had a comment and then it looked like, um, you also had something. Yep.
Um, I find it more useful to have the detail that was in the packet up on the screen. So for example, if Mr. Thompson is recommending a particular thing, it's really useful to have his, here are four points that he made on the screen for our discussion, I think, rather than just stating what it was and, and the staff recommendation. Can we possibly do that?
Yes. Give me a minute to find it, but I.
You're looking, so you're, you're talking about just the packet itself, not any subsequent.
Uh, well, I don't have it. Let me, I could take a look and see here.
I do not have his, uh, comment letter available, but I can bring up.
Okay, um.
Okay, I think you're, you're referring at the bottom of the, it's sort of the end of the packet, the submission that actually came from the applicants.
Yeah, yeah. So for some of these, I think there is some useful, um, detail listed that would be useful to have on the screen.
Okay, so, um, Allison, I don't know how easy it's gonna be to jump back and forth, but, um, maybe what we can do is we can start on your slides so that we can use that as a starting point and then, and then we can jump to any supplemental information if we, uh, if we need it.
That sounds perfect. That would do it.
I can't really see where you're seeing the screen share. Is it showing the slides now?
Yeah, yeah, we're saying it's not in slideshow view, but that's fine. You can just leave it as, um, as it is. That way you can jump back and forth easy enough.
So I'm thinking we should just take these in number order and start with number six and work our way through. Does that make sense?
That sounds great.
Chair.
Um, yes, sorry, Andrew.
Um, your microphone is extremely crackly and it's a little difficult to hear you, Chair Hubbell.
My apologies. It appears Zoom is not playing well with me for the moment.
Your headphones?
No, I actually have a, uh, like a podcasting mic I'm using. Is it still breaking up on you?
Yes.
The best, Ricky.
Um. My, uh, my apologies. Let's do this. Uh, I'm gonna, uh, why don't we take a five-minute recess, if that's okay? And let me restart my Zoom. For some reason, um, it's locking up on me here. So, um, let me, let's do that. If, uh, if you, if everyone doesn't mind, let's take a five-minute recess. If folks wanna take a, uh, bio break and we'll come back in, uh, five minutes. Is that, is that all right, uh, Andrew?
Yes, if, if folks will just turn off your, um, cameras and mute yourself for the recess, please.
That sounds great. We'll be back in five minutes. All right, Andrea, are you there? Can you hear me better now?
That's a hundred percent better.
Awesome. Yeah, I don't know what happened. All of a sudden my mouse stopped working too, and I'm like, what's happening here?
Yeah, it was, you were fine. You sounded fine. And then all of a sudden you just got really crackly. I tried to text you, but.
Yeah, I've got my phone off to the side, so I'm not, uh, yeah, all right. I've turned off my mouse, just in case that was causing trouble. Sometimes that happens.
Electrical interference.
Yeah, exactly. So, okay, I'm gonna mute. I'm gonna go, uh, take a quick break and I will be back in two minutes.
Perfect.
Okay, for those that you can hear, we'll come back in one minute. All right, I think we'll go ahead and start getting ready to get started again. And while we're waiting for the last, uh, couple of folks to come back on, I also wanted to call out for anyone who may be watching this remotely or watching the recording later. I think it warrants, uh, she probably doesn't want attention brought to her, but I do wanna say that like, uh, we have a captioner who is, uh, present and listening in, providing, uh, closed captions for Commissioner Mitchum. And, uh, I just wanna say thank you to, um, to Lisa, who's always been a part of sort of like a, a th- a third, um, or a, a sort of an eighth commissioner for us, because she seems to be at, at all of our meetings. And I know this is a lot of work for her to, um, keep up. I think it's great that we're able to provide and continue to provide that service for, uh, our commissioner, um, while we need them. So I, I just wanted to make sure to call that out. I don't think people appreciate how, uh, difficult it is in this, uh, virtual world to, uh, have to, to deal with that. So, um, anyhow, hopefully everything is working well for you, Jenny. And, uh, again, thank you, Lisa. All right, um, Allison, do we wanna start with, uh, oh, sorry, Jenny, did you have a question?
Oh, yeah, no, I just wanted to say thank you, but also to point out for anybody who is listening, that if you go down at the bottom bar, there's a little thing that says CC. So anybody can see the caption. You can either have them going on the bottom of the screen, or you can create a sidebar with the captions going on the side.
Oh, that's great.
Realize that that is available for everyone.
That's fantastic. Thank you. And, uh, yeah, it's so cool what technology can do for us. So, uh, with that, Allison, do you wanna get us started on, uh, item number six?
Turn the screen share back on here. Um, okay, so this was the item related to the comprehensive plan and the amendment proposed by Mr. Goldbach. This one had to do with the growth management hearings board. Wanna know if we wanna just open this to further questions or discussion from the commission? Um, and, and see where people are at with this in terms of moving it forward or not moving it forward.
Um, okay, I'll go ahead and open it up. Where's, uh, so, no, I, I forget what the exact tally was, but there was not a consensus to move this forward. Was there anybody who had any questions or concerns or comments around this, uh, in clarification? Commissioner Weinberg?
I guess, uh, it, my understanding is that the clause in question, allows the city to change something involving the comprehensive plan without having the change to the, uh, building codes done at the same time. So you could, uh, change, you could change comprehensive plan and then work on the codes and sometime a year or two years, or who knows how long later, come up with.
Or is that correct?
Yeah, it does have to do with the sequencing of that and our court code currently does allow us to adopt regulations that implement the comprehensive plan subsequently, um, within a reasonable amount of time. The idea was that that would allow for additional public outreach and engagement, um, as those regulations are developed.
If I can ask a clarifying question, um, is this, uh, the problem that we got into in 2019? When we passed, uh, the, uh, community facility zone, uh, or the land use? Um, and then we did not have, uh, building regulations for it and there was an applicant that wanted to build an amphitheater. Um, and we didn't have codes to, uh, use to apply to that, uh, because we hadn't yet created codes for, uh, that, uh, for that particular land use. I, and was the delta between when we passed the land use and when we were eventually going to hopefully get to the codes, what, uh, caused the, the problem there or my?
The growth management hearings board case was somewhat related to that situation with the community facility zone and they were suggesting, suggesting that the appellant in that case was suggesting that, um, the city must adopt the development regulations in, at the same time as, um, the comprehensive plan amendment. And, um, growth management hearings board did allow our regulations as they stand now to go forward, which says that, um, those don't need to be at the same time. And you're correct, though, that there was that issue where with the community facility zone, there was that gap in between when the comp plan was adopted and when the, regulations were under review and the JCC was trying to do the amphitheater. And so, you know, there was that problem that came up in that case.
Yeah, there's an ambiguity essentially about what rules do we apply here, right?
Uh, Commissioner Mitchum?
Just wanted to clarify, Ted. You said several times building codes, but I think you're talking about development code. Is that correct?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Pritsi Burley?
Um, so I, um, I'm, I'm curious because I don't think that land use code and comp plan code and comp plans are developed in a vacuum. And I wanna, um, I'm wondering if there's been any sort of evaluation of what other jurisdictions do around this issue? I mean, I, yeah, that's my question. Do, do we know that? Do we know?
Lucia, can you please keep your face in the screen?
Sorry, I've had to move my, um, yeah, so I just wanna, um, I'm just trying to understand because, uh, you know, we can develop code till we're blue in the face and it's probably already been done somewhere else. And I just, I wanna make sure that, you know, I mean, if it, if it exists somewhere else, that, you know, maybe we're, we can find consistency there instead of finding them. Yeah. That's all I'm saying.
Okay, thank you. I don't know, I'm not aware of how other cities handle this. Jeff, maybe I'll just speak to that if he's on, I'm not sure.
Um, Commissioner Boatsman, while we're waiting and if there's another reply, but Commissioner Boatsman?
Well, my perspective on this particular proposal was that, um, the city code is pretty clear that if, um, a comp plan change is proposed, which sort of adjusts an existing sort of program and function of the city, that those development regulations should go, be developed at the same time and be considered at the same time. But if it's a completely different, um, direction for the city, then those regulations can come very soon after. And according to the court case, you know, we were, we understand that we were not considered that, that what Matt is proposing is not required. So I'm, I'm fine with, um, you know, with not putting this forward because it's not required. And I, I just wanna be in compliance with the Growth Management Act and
Okay.
So I don't see how this is, why this would be needed.
Uh, very good. I, uh, let's see, we've heard from, uh, Commissioner Pritsi Burley, Commissioner Mitchum and Commissioner. Commissioner Mitchum and Commissioner Bozeman, Commissioner Goodman. Do you have any comments or questions?
Um, I guess I would just say I don't find it's necessary either. I know that you, you obviously want to make sure there are not inconsistencies between the comprehensive plan and the code. But we, there was one technical inconsistency which was remedied in this case, but it wasn't a broader inconsistency related to not having the code and the comp plan at the same time, if that makes sense. Our comp plan was essentially to say we would create this zone, but that wasn't found to be a consistency by my recollection. So I also don't find this is necessary.
Okay, I'll come back to Commissioner Bozeman. Commissioner Murphy, I just want to give you a chance to, I know you weren't here previously, but just want to give you a moment to comment on this if you'd like.
Uh, I tend to agree with Commissioner Goodman's comments. And it seems to me as a general rule, there is no requirement for those things to happen simultaneously. You can see where it can, where you have something that's very site specific. And, and I think the history of this thing sort of suggests that that was kind of the problem here. But in general, I don't think it is an urgent problem that justifies devotion of a lot of resources to it.
Okay. I saw second hands from Commissioner Bozeman and then Commissioner Mitchum.
Okay, it may not be my turn yet, but if, if it's okay, I'll just add that my comments really do not need to even include anything about the court case. It really doesn't, in my view, have anything to do with the court case. Basically, Matt is suggesting to simply repeal and remove a section of our city code, which I think we need to have. And that section of city code does not even say what he is asserting it says, which that it would allow us to fail to include development regulations along with the comp plan. It doesn't even say that. So certainly want to, wouldn't want to remove it because it's a section of the code that is needed.
I'm great. And I want to make sure I, Ted, did I skip over you or did you have any comments? That's what I, that's what was my recollection. I just wanted to make sure I didn't skip you. Jenny, did you have a comment?
I just wanted to say I, I agree with different comments and other folks. I don't think it's necessary. I think it, I think he's trying to fix the problem that doesn't exist.
Okay. Great. So with that, I have nothing to add that hasn't already been added. Are there any last comments before I call for a quick vote on whether or not to include this on the docket? Okay, hearing no additional comments or questions, all in favor of moving this forward to the docket, please signify by raising your thumb. Okay, and all those opposed, please thumb down. Okay, so the, uh, this will, will not go on the docket. And it was zero to seven.
So the next item, number seven, this is the one that relates to the conditional use permit regulations. And Mr. Goldbach is proposing a new subsection that would specifically say that the CUP regulations are only applicable for the property that it was granted to.
Okay, I'll start by doing the round robin. And I'm just going to start with a clarifying question. Allison, in your, uh, in your initial statement of this, and I believe it was in the, it may have been in the packet, but you said that this actually is currently existing law.
Correct. Basically, we have code that says our code official can require any information that's necessary to process the permit. And one of the requirements for an application is to include the parcel numbers for the project. And so we believe that that already gives us the authority that the CUP would only apply to those parcel numbers that were in the application.
Okay, I'll just do a call by name around for any questions. And I'll start in the top corner as at least as it shows up for me. Commissioner Murphy, do you have any questions or comments?
Yeah, the only question I'd have is, does this ever come up? It seems pretty rare.
Yeah, I mean, so the only thing that's related to this that I know about is the French American School is currently under a CUP and they have purchased additional properties outside of their CUP since it was, since they originally got it. And the CUP does not apply to those new properties, but I think there may have been questions about that from the neighbors.
Okay.
But the only, the only comment I would add is that, you know, from a land use and real estate law standpoint, if you have a grandfathered use, you cannot expand that use. And if you have, for example, an easement serving a parcel and you aggregate that with another parcel or acquire another adjoining parcel, that easement doesn't serve or run to that other parcel. So I think the notion that this is a problem is probably at best overblown and there just is no there there.
Okay, Commissioner Goodman, do you have any comments or questions?
No.
Commissioner Weinberg.
So a question, can a tax parcel ever change? Or is it, once it's defined, it's set forever?
Um, I mean, tax parcels can be, well, there's tax parcels that are basically the King County assessors area. And then we have, you know, our legal lots and lot boundaries can be changed either by combining or subdividing or boundary line adjustments.
Okay, so if somebody owns two adjacent properties and they get a cup for one property, but not for the other, and then later can they say, I want to now expand the tax parcels to include both of them? Is that something that they legally can do?
Um, I mean, they could combine parcels, but I think if they were looking to expand the uses that were allowed under their CUP, they would then need to update their CUP to apply to the larger property.
So any change to the definition of a tax parcel essentially invalidates whatever CUP has been granted to the old parcel?
Well, I see, for instance, that you have a use on one parcel and then that owner, they buy the next door parcel, right? So if you're looking to expand that use onto the new parcel, they would need potentially, depending on the zoning of that parcel, a CUP to do those uses there unless that parcel had different zoning that allowed it. Like you could have one parcel with residential zoning and another parcel with commercial zoning next to it. So it's kind of a context specific question, I think, but.
I see interim director Jeff is there looking to weigh in. Maybe we can get your opinion.
Just, just really quick, hopefully you can all hear me. The, the assessor's office actually helps us out with instances like this for the question being posed for future divisions of land or the consolidation of tax parcels. The assessor's office will, will reissue new tax parcel numbers in for that new configuration. So to this proposed amendment specifically, that's, that's a, that's a method that we can all use, whether it's staff or the citizenry or, you know, future purchasers or prospectors of land to know that things have changed over time from the initial issuance of a land use action for those parcels. So that helps us keep things in order at the city level and it kind of helps some of that effort.
So if I may ask a clarifying question? Yeah, so, um, if I hear you correctly then that if the, that a CUP is attached to a specific parcel definition, and if that definition changes, if, if they were to expand it or join it to something else, the CUP would no longer be valid. They would have to apply for a new CUP. Is that correct?
Or the CUP would only apply to the original definition of the boundary that was identified as part of, part of the action. So you don't get to go and buy a parcel and consolidate them and say, oh, now our CUP just grew by a hundred percent or 50%.
Right.
Which I think is never. Area of land, because we purchased more land, it doesn't work that way. So.
I think that's exactly what the, the individual who submitted this change was trying to prevent.
Which is exactly when we were researching this, after receiving the proposed amendment and looking at the code, excuse me, looking at the work of the assessor's office and consulting with our legal counsel, this is the conclusion we got to.
Thank you.
You're spot on.
Great, thank you, Ted. Commissioner Bozeman, do you have any questions or comments?
No, I thought that the staff's explanation for why this amendment would not be needed was very reasonable, made sense.
Okay, Commissioner Mitchum, do you have anything?
No, I concur that it is not necessary.
Great. Commissioner Priti O'Burley.
I, I do have a question because I remember when, I mean, in theory, this is sort of a lateral question, but in, when we were first discussing the JCC, there was some discussion about CUPs that had been applied to the JCC in the past. And it wasn't clear how to track them. So if a property owner, I mean, in terms of the historic record and how land use actions have taken place with respect to a piece of land, a land use, a landowner purchases an adjacent parcel, combines the parcel, essentially eliminates that, you know, boundary line between the two parcels. And there's a CUP originally on one and the new one doesn't have it. So in theory, they have to, are we nullifying the CUP that is applied to the original parcel? A, and B, how are we tracking this and maintaining a historic record of it? Does this make, is this like a unnecessary comment? I'm just, it's always been a little bit, it was a little murky to me when we were talking about that with respect to the JCC.
Yeah, I would say there has been some confusion with the JCC because of they've had these multiple CUPs over time that have sort of replaced each other as, as things have changed on their property. And, you know, typically when the new CUP comes in, it would fully replace the prior ones. And so I think where the concerns came from the neighborhood around the JCC was that there had been some conditions, you know, around various like parking and screening of the property and lighting and things like that that maybe weren't carried through as the CP had been updated. And so people were referring back to, well, back in 1977, you know, they agreed to do this and now they're not doing it. And so it was, it was difficult to track those and make sure that they were being complied with.
So how does that, I mean, is what Matt Goldbach proposing, is that trying to address that issue? Or is this something?
I don't think this proposal addresses that issue.
Okay, and do we have something in our code that does address that issue? Like, like, so going back to the example of, you know, we're combining two parcels, eliminating a property line. The first parcel has a CUP applied to it, the new parcel. So when it becomes effectively a new parcel, are we, does that nullify the original CUP and they have to reapply? Or does the CUP, can it be amended to include the new parcel?
Um, I mean, I think it would apply to the old, the boundaries of the old parcel until such a time that they did come in to apply for a new CUP or an amended CUP would, is essentially the same thing. Okay.
Okay. Commissioner Bozeman.
I just wasn't quite sure I understood Allison's answer. Do, do they have to amend the CUP on the larger parcel if they want to keep the CUP? Or does the CUP go away?
The CUP would still, it would stay, it would still apply to the original boundary lines that were the, the first property. If they wanted to expand the uses covered by the CUP to the larger new property, that would require a new CUP.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Mitchum.
So I want to expand a little bit on Commissioner Priti O'Burley's comment because now I'm recalling more of the content of our discussion about this. I do think that the record keeping and the both the institutional memory within the city and the community memory of what has happened over time and how different uses have changed over time as institutions have changed. I think that that is actually a little bit a problem that we can address with better record keeping, but it's not what the subject of this particular amendment request is for. I think it may be an attempt to get at that problem, but I am wondering if there is another means of addressing that record keeping issue that we could somehow address within the planning commission or pose as an inquiry or a request to staff. I understand that probably would take a fair amount of staff time to go back and do this and kind of reconstruct thing for historical property. But I think that that is something that actually might be more substantive in addressing the community concern over how institutional land use has evolved over time. So I think that this particular proposed amendment, I don't think we should go forward with it, but I do think that it is tangential to a different problem that we could address, which is the record keeping.
Okay. With all of that, I'll make a last call for any, I think everybody's had a chance to make one statement. Are there any final questions or comments before we do a thumbs up, thumbs down? Okay, seeing nothing additional at this point. All in favor of moving amendment number seven forward to the docket? Please signify by raising your thumb. Okay, all of those opposed, please vote down. Okay, and the amendment will not move forward with a vote of zero seven.
Okay, amendment eight. I believe folks were probably agreed that this one could just be combined with number one and does not need to move forward, but we do need to take a formal vote on it. This is the one that relates to the, the map update in the land use plan map.
Okay, before we take a vote, are there any additional questions or comments? Okay, so again, sorry, Jenny, go ahead.
Clarification question. Since the exact same content is being addressed by amendment one, is there any reason not to vote yes on this one? Or does it create some sort of a duplicate path? I mean, the same thing is going to happen regardless of.
Yeah.
I guess it doesn't make any difference.
I don't think it makes a huge difference. We were just trying to avoid duplication. Okay. Thanks.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. Not seeing any additional questions. All in favor of moving this amendment number eight forward to the docket? Please signify by raising your thumb. And all opposed, point down. Thank you very much. This will not move forward. This will not move forward with the recognition that it is a duplicate of another amendment that has already been moved forward onto the docket. Great, so amendment number nine.
Okay, and this is the one related to the nuisance control code and limiting landscaping hours and spotlighting should be directed within the property.
Great, and Carolyn, I know this was brought forward by you. Would you like to speak to it before everyone else?
Yes, I would. I didn't completely understand that I needed to submit the rationale with the proposal, so I'm glad to have this opportunity right now. I think that both of these proposed changes are problems right now. If you, all you need to do is spend the day at home to realize how much noise there is and how substantial it is. And on weekends as well, from the power tools associated with landscaping operations. Or go for walks at night in your neighborhood, which probably a lot of us are doing these days. We have those residences that have spotlights trained out into the street at all times. We also have those where you walk by the house and your very presence in the street triggers this light to come on into your eyes. So I realize that the city, as Allison pointed out, does not have a lot of staff to implement nuisance codes. But I believe the first line of defense against any nuisance is simply having a code that defines and limits that particular nuisance. Most people comply once they know that this is in the code. And the city is protected from having to increase their level of inspection or follow up on these things. One, city codes do generally give a blanket exemption for the, the city is not required to fully implement codes they have. There is that basic protection for cities in terms of, you know, how much base, how many bases they can cover. In particular, the city's code compliance regulation has a specific paragraph that, you know, basically says this department is going to follow up on complaints on a priority basis that's established by the city. So I don't feel that this type of change in the city code would cause a a substantial staff impact. But it would give guidance and relief, I think, to some extent for residents.
Allison, can I ask if you know the answer to this, or Carolyn, maybe you even know through your, can you remind me what the construction hours, the construction noise hours are?
Um, I'm struggling to get the exact right answer, but it's, there's a
I'm pulling it up, Allison.
It's seven to eight on weekdays and Saturdays, and I believe Sunday is eight.
For permitted work, there's no construction, like for holidays.
The hours of construction are 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM Monday through Friday, except for holidays, and 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM on Saturdays. No work may be performed on Sundays and holidays. And that's MICC 8 dot 24 dot 020.
Thanks Andrea.
Thank you. All right, I'll just do a quick call around the room just to see if there are any additional comments. Commissioner Goodman, do you have any questions or comments?
I don't, thank you.
Commissioner Weinberg, do you have any questions or comments?
Yeah, I guess the first observation is the vast majority of people on Mercer Island are lighting people. And if we change a law saying, hey, don't run power tools after a certain hour, and when you're installing lighting pointed at your property, they'll do it, right? We don't have to enforce it for 99% of the people out there. I believe that the lights that are already there are going to end up being grandfathered. So they wouldn't, the people who have lights pointing out to their properties and don't want to change it, wouldn't be forced to. But I think that really the impact of this change is going to be for new construction. That when somebody builds a new property, they're going to need to point the lights towards inside the property. And for new work being done, essentially, or when people are having yard work done, they will need to schedule it within the right hours. I get it that we don't have a lot of resources for enforcing it, but I don't think that should block us from creating a rule that is going to improve the quality of life on the island. I'm definitely for this one.
Commissioner Mitchum, do you have any comments or questions?
Oh, um, um, I'm kind of on the fence about this one. I think that there are, I think it makes sense. I do think it's a bit of a resource issue for implementation. So, um, I think I, yeah, I don't have any further comment. Thanks.
Commissioner Purtia Burley?
Um, I'm, so first of all, you know, I live next to an elementary school. I have a neighbor who compulsively is out with a leaf blower every morning. Like, Sunday to Sunday. I have another neighbor who has a gardener who comes three times a week and blows, blows leaves. So I'm, because we had a rule when we developed this nuisance language that it was related to to permitted work. So that meant, like, when you got a permit to build a house, or you got it, you weren't allowed to use power tools on Sundays. I'm a little bit at a loss as to how this, like, are we saying with this code, Carolyn, maybe you can clarify, or maybe we can talk about it. Would this be like, you know, somebody not being allowed to use their leaf blower on Sundays? I mean, I hate leaf blowers, don't get me wrong, even though I use it to clean my roof, but I hate them. But I think there's kind of like a murky edge there. And I'm trying to understand where the reinforcement, where the enforcement, I mean, forget the city resources because there simply isn't resource to enforce this. But nor do I, I think there might be resource to write the code and to begin with, within city staff. But I'm trying to understand, is this applicable to the homeowner who is out doing their weekend warrior yard maintenance? I think that the thing about lights is kind of, it's, to me, it's, it's sort of a non-issue because, yeah, you shouldn't be spilling light into the right of way. I do know that, you know, everybody's concerned about safety and, you know, everybody's sure that somebody's coming from off-island to rob them. So they have these automatic lights come on. I think you can manage that by having it, you know, making sure the light's directed to your property. But my, I really am kind of trying to get my head around how this is applicable to people who are doing their own gardening, which is, I think, from my perspective, kind of the major source of this annoyance. Can you talk about that?
Carolyn, I just wanted to point out, the language here does say commercial landscaping, so I would assume that that's, you know, again, services and that sort of thing. But Carolyn, do you have a more specific definition or?
No, that's exactly what I would say. I was really only suggesting this for commercial landscaping services that use power tools. The change would be rather modest. I mean, basically, you're just saying you can't do this on Sundays and holidays. You can't do it before seven o'clock in the morning on a weekday, and you can't do it after 7:00 PM on a weekday, you know. It's a modest change, frankly, from, and it isn't going to solve the annoyance that most of us experience, you know, a lot. However, it's, it's a start, and I think it would help, you know, to not have it on Sundays and holidays. But only commercial. Regarding the lighting, Lucia, again, and let's get back to what Ted said as well. Would existing lighting be grandfathered in? Typically, this proposal is only towards spotlighting. So spotlighting is maneuverable. You can turn it. And even for us, Lucia, you mentioned landscaping, you know, gardening. These types of lights are adjustable in terms of the direction. So if you want to light up your landscape, that's fine. Just turn the lights toward your own property instead of your
That I understand. I mean, I do understand that. That's not my question. My question is really, really, like, you know, my perception of these leaf blowers, the annoyance from them comes also from the homeowners, you know, it's like, I mean, I feel like I'm completely embattled here with neighbors on all sides who are out there blowing leaves all along.
Apply to homeowners. It's not, I'm not trying to be that ambitious. I'm just trying to direct it towards commercial, which, you know, there is a lot of that as well.
Yeah. Let me get to Commissioner Murphy, because I know you are the last on my list.
But not the least.
At least for this round.
At least for this round, that's right. You know, I tend to agree that this is really quite narrowly focused and easy to, to deal with, would not require a lot of staff resources to do in the process. And I think it does address in a modest ways the kind of problems that we all now deal with, you know, being and working at home every day. So I, I'd vote to move it forward because I don't think it's really a big time suck.
Okay. I'll just weigh in my two cents, which is, while I agree circumstances just have changed in the midst of COVID and all of that, and, you know, we're just home and around more. I would really be more in favor of actually taking up a broader review of the nuisance code, because I actually sort of on the surface don't disagree with either of these points and the need to potentially address them. I, A, think that it's really the tip of the iceberg. I think there's a lot more that we need to review in that regard. And then, number two, if I think about the resourcing that we have for the city, this is a nice to have. Like, there are some issues that were brought up earlier, specifically some of the ones that we're legally obligated to go after. And as far as I'm concerned, I don't disagree that these aren't things that warrant further conversation, but they just, for me, in the scope of the year that we've had and the year that I know that we're going to have in 2021, these just don't raise for me to the level of need to do. These are nice to have. And I really just don't think we have any leeway in the resourcing. And I think it is not prudent to move forward things in the environment that we're in that aren't explicitly necessary for the function and safety of the community. And so that's just my position on this. I'll ask for any further comments before we take a vote. Is there anybody else who'd like to weigh at the end? Commissioner Boatsman?
Um, I would like to add that I understood that our process tonight was going to also include, you know, things that we would normally forward, but that at the end, there would be a sort of a green line drawn below as far as staff felt they could handle for the year. So your concern about sending something forward that there may not be time to do, it could be that some of those placeholders don't end up coming forward. So if we do have things that we think are good and we put them on the list, hey, if we get time, we can do them. If we don't, we won't. So that's why I would encourage sending it forward at this time.
Alice, did we have an ancillary list the last year? I do, I do recollect that, that we had sort of a like, here's the list A and the list B. How was that typically handled?
I don't know about that. I'm happy to give feedback as we start to get close to having a final list on, you know, what resources we have and what we might be able to get done next year. But the commission needs to be the one that makes the recommendation in terms of what's on the docket. The staff should not be
Yeah.
In terms of what
Commissioner Weinberg was first, and then you, Lucia.
Yeah, so I think in general, we should shoot for sending to the to the council a list that we know is going to be more than what CPD can do with their current staff, but then prioritize it so that they go from the top down with the expectation they're not going to get all the way through the list. And as long as the community has the expectation that we're not going to get through the whole list unless we're really lucky and other stuff gets done a lot faster or something, then we should be okay, right? People won't feel pressured to get through the whole list if we know at the beginning that it's a little bit much. This is actually how we do it at the city of Seattle, and it works pretty well.
With the caveat, and I see Jeff put his camera on, that my understanding is that if it's on the docket, we're legally obligated to actually take action on the issue within the year. So that's, that's the only caveat. Now, I do concede that this is just a proposal to the council, and they can hack and slash this however they want. So you can vote with that in mind as well. But Jeff, can you correct me if my assessment of that is incorrect?
It was pretty darn close. The one, one alteration I would, I would make to that is we can carry docket items forward year over year, but we need to recognize that it's being carried forward from a year to another year. The challenge we get into by, you know, overloading a docket once the docket is set by the city council is if we're not able to complete all the items that are doctored in any particular year, and they do carry forward, we get into that compounding effect then, because then the annual docket runs next year as well, right, and the year after that. So certainly, in my experiences, I would offer to the commission here this evening, you know, staff has reviewed the items and we brought forward some context that we felt was a right size for the time and the resources available for 2021. And I would encourage the commission to kind of, you know, to the extent possible, work within those those parameters as well for your recommendation to the city council as you go through and consider these. To that extent, you might end up with a few items here where we're only halfway through, I believe. So you may end up with what you might feel after going through the next eight as a situation where you want to cycle back one final time to a couple of them. But that'll be up to you to decide as you make your way through this.
Commissioner Purtia Burley?
Can we provide qualifiers with our, like, with our recommendations? So could we say, you know, on our docket, we put mandatory? Because I do agree, you know, I mean, if, there were two that are placeholders. And if those placeholders go away, then we, I mean, I'm not saying that, you know, I know that there's always going to be stuff that fills staff time. And right now, the city, you know, I'm dealing with the city on a daily basis. And I know that you guys are running on fumes. And, you know, anything that's absolutely not necessary is not, I mean, we shouldn't be, we shouldn't responsibly be putting it forward. But that said, if, if there is an opportunity to to, you know, you know, to do some work that, because we all are so sick of all this noise and the lights and you know, I mean, and it's a factor of the fact that this city is, is, you know, rapidly urbanizing. But is, if there's a way, can we put a qualifier on, on certain approvals saying, look, this is bottom, like Ted was saying, bottom priority. But if we can get to it, let's get to it. Can we do that? Is that part of the legal process?
I think the explanation that was affirmed by Jeff that I asserted was no, that if it's approved by the council to be on the docket, there's an obligation
to at least address the issue in such that a non-action would have to be that we would need to vote to carry it forward if we didn't complete it, if that makes sense. So Commissioner Mitchum and then Commissioner Weinberg.
So my question is sort of the converse of that. Is there any reason that if staff does have capacity as we approach the end of the year, is there any reason that we cannot take this up if it's not on the docket? I mean, some things do require public notice. They require, I mean, there's a process for doing comp plan amendments. So presumably, we would not be able to do it if it weren't beyond the, if it weren't on the docket. Is that correct? I think this is a question for Jeff or Allison.
For code amendments, we theoretically could take them up if they're not on the docket. Those can be proposed outside of the docketting process by staff or the commission. Only comp plan amendments are restricted to the docket process.
Okay. And and those those kind of last minute or, you know, immediate action types of things are typically limited to emergency types of situations or kind of urgent, you know.
Best practice, it's a best practice to docket things when we know about them in advance, but it's foreseeable that a code amendment, code amendment could come up mid-year, three quarters through the year that we hadn't foreseen during the docketting process. And then we would need to to do that code amendment at that time. Like, it might not be an emergency, but it may be suddenly a higher, higher priority that wasn't foreseen.
I have another question.
Sorry, Commissioner Bozeman was.
Yeah, that clarified for me. I think it's a I I think it's a nice to have. It's not something we absolutely have to do right now. And so that clarifies my decision. Thank you.
Commissioner Bozeman, I know you were trying to get something in and then.
Oh, sure. Just. Dan, I think we received a from the staff in email, a procedure, how we were going to go through these things. There was a couple of Ted had proposed one and then staff had a proposed procedure, but I don't quite feel like we're quite following it. And I I I wish we could get it up on the screen because I understood we were gonna decide things on their merits and then take a look at the whole list and decide where to chop it off. So I was wondering if we could get that up on the screen, that procedure, so that we could figure out if we're.
That was Ted's recommendation.
No, there was a one provided by staff as well.
It did not include that pop it off idea.
Yeah, I mean, the the procedure.
Screen?
The procedure that that I was following that was sort of the the trying to give just because of Zoom, it's hard to make sure that we're including everyone. So I'm sort of doing a round robin twice of everyone's comments, at which point we would then vote to include or not include something in in the final docket. And I'm happy to be corrected if I've missed something with what, but that was what was my understanding of what the staff had prepared as sort of a recommendation as a best practice on how to manage a meeting through Zoom. So Andrea, was there something I missed there? Or is that summarize the mail that you sent?
That summarizes the mail. I think the confusion is coming in that email that I sent. Commissioner Weinberg had also proposed a process for going through this. So I included both of those proposals of Commissioner Weinberg's as well as staff's recommendation for how to proceed through the proposals.
So if I if I can.
I guess I'm gonna have to go look at it, take some time and try to find it. I just would like, it would be very simple to put it up on the screen.
I'll I'll make it simple, Carolyn. I'm gonna continue to follow the process where I'm going to give everyone at least two opportunities to speak, at which time we will sort of take a poll of whether or not we want that action included on the amendment included on the final docket. My understanding of the docketting process is that again, there is no option for having a nice to have on the docket that we are going to just provide a list. And this is the work that we think needs to be done this in the following year. And, you know, I'll assert that, you know, I think that that is the prudent way to approach this. Just given the situation that we're in from a COVID perspective, as well as the resource constraints that we have, you can feel free to vote in another way, should you disagree with that assessment. But I think that's the way that we need to proceed, just given my understanding of sort of the the rule of procedure. Ted, I'll take this.
I put up the procedure that we've been following on the screen.
And then Commissioner Weinberg, I'll take your last question and then go from there.
Um, so the 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 laws of the city belongs to the city council, the legislative body that can change it how they like, as long as it doesn't violate, you know, other higher agencies like county, state, federal, et cetera. And so if everyone's concerned about, well, if we've had this in there, then we're legally required, we have to do it. Let's, we are an advisory body to the council. We can advise the council to create essentially a required docket and a optional docket where the optional docket gets addressed if the stuff in the required document is either done or is proves to be undoable, right? We might have one of the placeholders go away, or you might find that one of them is blocked by something else, in which case, because certainly have a bunch of time, we'll be thankful to have be able to deliver some additional value to the deposit there. We can do this. We can recommend to the the council that they create this optional docket, or whatever we want to call it, substitute, I think was the term I used in the mail that I sent. And by the way, to respond to Carolyn's question, there was a a procedure that I had sent to Andrea and then I mean, unbeknownst to me, the staff had also come up with their own procedure and Andrea was kind enough to present both of them at the same time. But the one of all about the green line thing, that was essentially the suggestion I had. And it looks Dan is, as the chair, has chosen to go with.
Okay, thank you.
Staff.
Um, great. I I oh, things just bounced around on my screen. I think you stopped sharing, Allison. So, uh, Lucia, do you have anything? Do you have anything pertinent to the to the topic? I don't want to to belabor a procedure at this point. So.
I have a question. Do we have a back pocket? I I think that we need to have a back pocket like it of of things that we want to get done. So if we can.
So I think the back pocket here is code amendments actually don't require us to have them on the docket. And I think what I heard from Allison was it's certainly nice to have. The only requirement specifically for being on the docket is for comp plan amendments. And in the case of the nuisance code, because it would be a code update, it would not be impossible or implausible to approach the council to take action to direct us to to look at that work at some point later in the year if necessary. Is that correct, Allison?
Sure, yeah.
Can we request that some of these things be put in the back pocket?
I I think it's fair to say there's going to be a number of these things that that may end up, let's take a list, Allison, and just know that, hey, we're not voting saying no, that this doesn't warrant being looked at, but it's you know, maybe not appropriate to put as a part of this process.
I think it would be fine to have part of your recommendation, you know, we can have some texts that go into the agenda bill that explain, you know, there was also these things that are not recommended for the docket, but they are important and the commission believes they should be taken up at some point, either if there's available time in 2021 or in future years, these these ideas have merit and should be considered.
Okay.
Sounds good to me.
I think that's a fair compromise. Okay, good. So on this item related to the noise and lighting requirements as a part of the nuisance ordinance, do all of those in favor of moving this forward to the docket? Go ahead and raise your thumb. Okay, I have two in favor. All of those saying no, please vote by saying no. Okay, and so we have two to five, not to move to the docket, but I think I heard consensus amongst the group that maybe this is one that should be noted as a part of the staff report that accompanies the agenda bill.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. I'm just advancing this to number 10. Okay. And this was the one, the second one from Commissioner Bozeman regarding adding goals and policies to the comprehensive plan about the prioritization of the use of the public right of way.
Hey.
Do you want to give a little more context, Carolyn? Thank you.
Sure. Um, two problems that I see that inspired this thinking. One, in my neighborhood and all over the island, the city is allowing property owners to landscape all the way out to the pavement. Now, I love landscaping. I like grass. I like trees, you know, there's green stuff. That's good. However, there is not even a 10-foot strip for temporary parking when people come to visit those houses. So those people coming to visit, they park either completely out in the street. It's really stunning to see this, but they will park right in the lanes of traffic to visit those people to avoid parking on their lawn. Or they will park in front of the houses that have kindly left a small gravel strip for people to park. That's one of the problems I see. The other one is I don't see that the city has a priority for using rights of way for environmental benefit, such as trees. Where it is feasible, there really isn't goals and policies in our comprehensive plan directing the city to do something besides the pavement and the utilities. So in in short, here's a giant piece of public property that the city hasn't carefully examined all the possible benefits for the use of that currently unused space, sometimes unused space for public benefit. So, for example, in front of my house, we have a 60-foot easement with I think maybe about a 20-foot wide pavement in it. And so a number of neighbors are using all the rest of that space for their personal landscaping and, as I said, some parking. So, um, that's the reason I'm proposing this is to do the give a careful thought as to what could this public property be used for besides enhancing the neighbor's landscape? And to solve the parking problem.
Commissioner Hubbell, you're muted.
I was eating my M&Ms and didn't want to crunch and everybody's here. Thank you, Commissioner Boatman, is what I started with. And I followed that with, I'll start in the upper quadrant. Commissioner Murphy, do you want to? Do you have any comments or questions?
You know, I'm, I think this is awfully amorphous at this point. I understand what the intent is, but you know, I think this would require an awful lot of effort to analyze across the board and around the island. And clearly, this year, we don't have those resources. But the concept is a good one, but probably not now.
Okay. Commissioner Weinberg, do you have any comments or questions?
I guess it seems to me that this would add to the quality of life on the island and is therefore a good proposal. I think I I agree with what Mike was just saying in terms of the that we're probably almost certainly not going to have the resources to do it this year. So I would recommend that this be another one in the back pocket as as Lucia puts it, that could be done if for some reason, we get done with all the other stuff early.
And we have a windfall.
Uh, I'll go to you then, Commissioner Purtia Brody. Do you have any additional comments be beyond your?
I think that we should call, what was the name of that guy who used to own Starbucks who created all this outrage because he was landscaping part of the Olmsted Park for his own garden?
Yeah.
I think that that's what we should call this movement. But I agree that it's something that I really, I really agree with. But as Mike said, it needs a little bit more kind of fleshing out a, and secondly, I think that you know, I'm, I'm particularly concerned about overloading staff. I'm seeing a lot of stress on their part and it's impacting their ability to you know, to get work done that need that really is is immediate. And so what I would recommend is holding on to this idea, Carolyn, and fleshing it out and hopefully our economic situation will have improved over the year and bringing it back next year with a really clearly codified. You know, like, like I would almost try to find the section in the comp plan, you know, and write that section and so that it required very little staff labor. Like I said, I, you know, I deal with staff on a really regular basis and and these guys are just, I mean, they're burning the candle at both ends and I don't want to be in a situation where we're driving them away because we've overburdened them to the point that they can't get their work done. So that's my my we're in a difficult situation right now.
Commissioner Mitchum.
Well, I think that this proposed amendment does both too much and too little. I would love to see the city have a serious discussion about how we deal with the right of way in terms of improving pedestrian safety. I would love to see us put sidewalks on a lot of the ultras and sort of secondary roads because it is a daily safety issue and it's an accessibility issue for a lot of people. But unfortunately, this is not the time. It's not the economic environment. It's not the political environment in which we can do that. I very much appreciate the sentiment behind this amendment. But I think that it needs it needs fleshing out. I think that there are definitely environmental issues that we can address, the pedestrian issues, there are a variety of transportation issues related to how we deal with the right of way. But I do think that those are things that we will be better off addressing in a much more comprehensive fashion at a later date. If this was something a little bit more specific, I would feel like there was something more I could sort of chew on and respond to, but it's sort of a general, I mean, I totally agree. Yes, we should have some sort of prioritization. But I think that process needs to happen in the future and within either the major comprehensive plan amendment that we're going to, you know, the rewrite, the periodic rewrite that we're going to do in, I think, 2022 or 23, if I'm correct, it's been delayed or through some other process. So my inclination would be to say no to this amendment, just because of timing and process. But please know that I do support the the sentiment behind it and the intent behind it.
Commissioner Goodman, do you have any further comments?
Did you call me?
Yes.
Okay. I agree. I agree a lot with Jenny. I think what I would say to take a bit further is we we really need to do some community visioning, and I think we'll have to do that as part of the major comp plan update. You know, I've really been hoping for years that we can get to the point where we really do some significant outreach. You know, I've really been hoping for years that we can get to the point where we really do some significant outreach and pull in voices that we don't tend to get during a lot of our other processes. And so I guess what I would just say is in terms of the outreach, like, let's go to the community with some sort of concrete examples and see what looks good to them. And also tailor it a little bit to the different neighborhoods. A lot of the issues Carolyn's described tonight, I don't see at all in my neighborhood. It's not, it's not an issue I have in the areas I tend to go on the island. So I'm just kind of acknowledging people have different experiences depending on where they live and where they tend to be in the island. And I think we need to be really thoughtful about capturing different voices and then figuring out how to turn that into a city policy that's, you know, that works kind of for the community more broadly. And then, of course, you know, that'll feed down into our design standards and our street standards and all of that. I think that's it.
Thank you. All before I do another quick second round, just quickly, my three thoughts on this. I won't belabor the resourcing conversation here to similar to the other one, and I think others have said this, like, I think on the surface, this isn't necessarily a bad thing, and I would certainly be in favor of a broader look at some of the items that you have brought up. I do have one concern, however, just on the surface, which is I do think that there's, this falls into the potential law of unintended consequences, right? And so Carolyn, I know you live up here near me on First Hill. And it's an older neighborhood, I, you know, Tiffin, to your point, you live in a neighborhood that's newer and a little bit more developed that I think was developed under a set of right-of-way standards that was different in the 40s, you know, 30s, 40s and 50s when First Hill was developed. I know that I have neighbors that have, you know, trees that are 70 years old or landscaping that's 70 years old in what would technically be considered the right-of-way. And it would be an absolute tragedy to lose some of that if we, for example, decided to go and you know, clear out all of the the right-of-way to create more parking. Like, I just think that would be the exact opposite of what we're going for. And I'm not saying that's what you're proposing, Carolyn, or what the intent of what you're proposing is. I'm just, again, getting to the law of unintended consequences if it were interpreted in the incorrect way. So notwithstanding all of that, I'm still going to lean back on the idea. I just, I, this is a nice to have. I don't think it creates a clear and present safety or community danger. And as far as or legal obligation that we need to to follow through on, and I'm going to be pretty steadfast in protecting the resources of the city and saying that on the surface, this looks good, but I just think it needs to be pushed, pushed out. With that, I'll ask for another round of comments. If anyone else has a parting comment. Carolyn?
Well, um, thank you, everyone, for your comments and feedback. I really appreciate it on both of these things that I brought in. Regarding, you know, one of them was code amendment changes, the nuisance code, and that's quite specific, but you know, when you're recommending an area of comp plan change that doesn't exist at all, one is probably not really in a position to provide a fully fleshed out, you know, idea. It's really more promoting this is an area of goal and policy which we don't have, which we really probably should have. So I wouldn't, you know, be in the position of trying to say anything much more specific. But in regard to, yeah, Dan, your comment about concern about losing trees and gaining parking, right? That's the the whole conversation is how do you prioritize, you know, the wonderful different uses that could be that right of way could be put to. And last, um, I continue to be a little uncomfortable with our process here because it would seem that anything from here on out, we're all going to say no to. I mean, it looks that way because we're all going to make the prema, well, possibly premature decision that there isn't time to do it. So to my way of thinking, I think what we should be doing is deciding, is this a good thing? Is this an important thing to do? Be in favor of it. And then we get all done with your list. You know, consult with staff and say, okay, this is too ambitious. Take these bottom four or five things, put them on the optional, you know, if you have time sort of thing. But for all of us to independently decide piecemeal, there isn't time for this. I think that's a little bit kind of shooting ourselves in the foot.
Okay, any other comments, Ted?
Yeah, so I guess with the previous one, we kind of informally created in a backup list. We kind of had a vote on whether to have it on the docket and said no. But then it said, but it will be added to some kind of a recommended if time permits list. I was wondering if we could, I would like to make a motion that we actually make that official, that we're going to have a backup list and that for each of these items that we vote, first of all, should it be on the docket as a required item? And I have a second vote for should it be on the the backup list? And so if we say no to both, then essentially the planning commission is saying, don't include it on either. But it allows us to essentially have something between a one and a zero that we send to council and that makes it less pressure on CPD because they know that essentially the stuff that's in the required list is all the that is really on their plate and the stuff that's in the optional list is only if they can get to it.
Yeah. I agree, and I think that's fine. I think in the case of the way this was proposed as a comp plan amendment, we wouldn't necessarily to do that. The the question would be is could it be managed through code? I think that's would fall into that category of we can add it to the list of things that we would say, hey, if we have time to open the code and take a look at this, we should do that. And Allison, I don't know if you have any perspective, just given the commentary you've heard. Like, do you think this is an explicit comp plan thing, or is this more of a code revision conversation that might need to be had?
I mean, I think if we were talking about a code revision, it would mainly apply to when properties are newly newly developed and they're looking at, you know, where utility infrastructure and fire hydrants and new tree planting might happen within the right of way. I don't know that codes would apply as much to places that are already already have things in the right of way.
And and my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, sort of the the process here to really create any essential change to the the construct of how the existing right of way is leveraged would be a comp plan amendment would create goals and policies that would, you know, lay out sort of what the ideals are. And then that would have to be then, in addition to that, applied as either a program or maybe new code that would be written, you know, something to that effect that would actually implement the goals and visions from the what are they, what are they called? The the anyhow, the elements of the comp plan. You would have to create those things in addition to that as well, correct?
Right. Any, any policies that are added to the comp plan would need to be implemented through regulations. And so if we don't already have regulations like that, then we would need to adopt those.
Well, the comp plan is a roadmap for how we develop code, so.
Right. So I think Ted, to your point, I think it warrants putting on the list should this not be approved, it warrants being noted on the list. I first don't think we need a a formal vote more than saying we have consensus that this is something that the commission feels needs to be looked at and we're concerned that this wasn't the right forum to do that through. But that should be forwarded as an item to the to the council. I'm going to go to Jeff first and then Commissioner Goodman.
Real quick, thank you. I just want to make sure there's no confusion on this one. It was submitted as a, an amendment to the comprehensive plan, so it needs to be either on the recommended docket or not. Yeah, okay, thank you.
Yeah, we will still take that vote. Commissioner Goodman, and then I'll go back to Commissioner Boatsman.
Yeah, I guess, I guess what I'm trying to grapple with is Allison said that generally it is the city's procedure with new development to consider all these things, including trees and street parking. I'm, I'm assuming, but I'll just ask the question that you have street standards in place for our residential streets. I assume that's what you're working off of for your development code, Allison?
I believe there are street standards and our civil engineer, our arborist, our fire marshal, our planners, they all review plans. And one of the things they pay special attention to is the right of way and how they can fit in all the things that are needed there, you know, whether it's utility infrastructure, a new fire hydrant, trees that need to be replanted, et cetera. And so very commonly, when there's a proposal for a new home or a remodel that's going to affect that right of way, those plan reviewers have to get together and coordinate because, you know, there's a lot of competing priorities there for use of that space. And they've got to work out the way that all of those necessities can fit and, you know, we can, we can have all those things that we need.
And then do you know that if off-street parking is also a part of that review? I'm just going to say I'm kind of assuming that for new development, there is sort of an off-street parking space, often it's gravel. So I'm wondering if sort of this issue is more properties that have sort of, you know, grown over the years and don't conform to our current street standards.
Um, I mean, the off-street parking is not explicitly required other than, you know, their garage and the parking spaces that are required for their home, but that's sort of within the right-of-way parking space is usually requested by the property owner. And then they need to do a right-of-way use agreement with the city to have that paving or gravel there typically.
I see. So I guess then I sort of summarize my comments as I'm I maybe even go back to Jenny's comment to say, should this be like a bit of a broader scope, like where are we going to have our bike lanes or our sidewalk build up, that kind of thing? I feel as though I don't know what the comp plan amendment will do from a practical basis unless it's going to drive us to actually change our development standards or program city projects. I don't know if anyone has sort of like feedback on that. But I'm just trying to think like, it's great to have policies, but you need some mechanism to actually get those to reality.
Well, so let me go back to Carolyn and then I'll go to Lucia.
No, I don't have any comment. Well, you know, whenever there's a comp plan change, you know, it's, there is some idea of how codes will be needed or be changed. But I mean, that that would be something you you couldn't really fully envision, completely envisioned in it at this, you know, when you're just discussing conceptual. Um, regarding new development, Tiffany, you asked quite a bit about that. New development right now, if the developer wants to put the grass all the way to the pavement, they don't require permission from the city to do that. Okay, and and they're not, there's not required to keep a space for temporary parking at all. And if they, in fact, if they want to extend their landscape all the way to paving bushes, you know, flower beds, all of that is allowed as long as it doesn't include a, a sort of a permanent structure, like let's say you want to build a brick foundation for your mailbox. You have to get an obstruction, a permit from the city to build that sort of thing. But right now, a house right next to me, just in the last month, just finished their landscaping and they're all the way out to the pavement. Guy down the street, same thing two years ago. Other direction, same thing three years ago. So it, there isn't any, it's new development that's almost the worst, frankly. But my suggestion was not so much, you know, envisioning programs. It was a matter of setting in priority, what is the value and the desired uses of this, this property? So what's allowed and what's the priority of use? One thing we should remember is we have a very large and significant portion of our docket that is placeholders. It's rather unusual because of the uncertainty of our situation. So it could be that we really don't have a lot to do this year. It's all, it's all very much up in the air. So I think our, this year more than ever, having this sort of back pocket or optional list is a pretty useful thing. Thank you.
Okay, I will take a last call. Anyone else that hasn't had a couple of chances to speak? Feel free to indicate, Ted?
I've had a couple of chances to speak, but I would like to ask clarifying question to Jeff, if I may. So Jeff, you mentioned that because this is a, this is a comp plan amendment, it must be either on the docket or off the docket. And I presume is that city law that requires that or is that from the GMA?
Well, it's from growth management state statute and then Mercer Island City Code is consistent with that.
Okay, so if the council were to change its code to say that it has a docket and it has a list of substitute items in case something on the docket can't be done during that year, would, are you saying that would be inconsistent with the GMA?
Council takes the the action to set, the council's required to take an action to set the docket if we offer an annual amendment process. If an item is on that list, that docket, we are required to process and take a legislative action on it.
Understood. So there's nothing blocking council from creating a substitute list and putting this as well as the previous one on it. It would still be in compliance with the GMA because the things that that are comprehensive plans that we've already passed in the, in the hour previous to this one are the only ones that would be required, right?
No, that is not correct. A comprehensive plan amendment either has to be on the list that's doctored by city council or not. It can't be on a substitute list. Maybe we'll do it, maybe we won't. If you wish to make some sort of subsequent motion after, you're going to need to vote tonight to make a recommendation of the council on what they should dock it and what they shouldn't. If you want to, similar to the conversations already occurred this evening, make some other sort of subsequent motion invoked for one or more code amendments that, hey, it'd be nice if, you know, the city worked on these two at some point in the near future, that time. What I'm trying to say is that 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 subsequent list can't include a comprehensive plan amendment. Because if it's not on the actual docket that's set ultimately by city council, it can come back next year as a proposed docket item for 2023, 22, excuse me.
I'm with you.
But it's, it's the comprehensive plan amendments aren't wishy-washy. They can go on the substitute list and then maybe, you know, be in the farm team and then come up to the major league roster. Have to be either or, they're either on the major league roster to start with or they got to try out to get on the major league roster next year.
Okay, and you're saying that's defined by GMA, not by the city code?
We are, it's also in city code. I had it up on my other screen earlier and I took it down. I thought the conversation had passed, but the the code is very clear that councils required to set a docket for the upcoming year of comprehensive plan amendments and code amendments. Allison and others pointed out earlier tonight, the code amendments, we try and be, or I guess our goal moving forward, starting for 2021 is to identify early expected code amendments for the upcoming year to include those as part of the docket process. It helps us with budgeting, correlating the budgeting and work programming relationship to make sure that we're not biting off more than we can chew and also to be transparent to not only our legislative bodies, but to the public as well. What we expect to be working on for the upcoming year.
So it sounds like the only way that we're going to be able to have this secondary list is if they are code changes. It sounds like you're advising us that the GMA does not allow to have comprehensive planet, comprehensive plan amendments in some kind of a secondary list. It's either they're on the list.
You are stating that correctly, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, uh, given all of that conversation, let me go ahead and take a vote of the amendment in front of us, number 10. This is related to the adoption of goals and policies prioritizing public rights of way as we've been describing. All in favor of moving this forward to the docket, please signify by raising your thumb. Okay, I see two and all of. Okay, I see two. And all of those opposed, please indicate, no? Okay. The amendment will not be added to the docket with a vote of two to seven. The two in favor were Commissioner Boatsman and Commissioner Weinberg. Oh, sorry, two to five. My math is really bad tonight. Sorry. I looked at my sheet. There was a seven in the line before and I just like read it. My apologies. All right, Allison, do we want to move to number 11?
Yep, I'm attempting to do that. There we go. Okay, so this is the first of the Daniel Thompson proposals. And this one's related to residential development standards. And it's the one that would reduce ceiling height from 12 feet to 10 feet when it's counted as clear story space for 150% of gross floor area.
Okay, Commissioner Meacham?
I'd like to propose that we discuss amendments, what are the 11 through 15, add a packet because, rather than discussing the merits of each one, because I think the content of them may or may not be things that we want to deal with. But I think the overarching issue for all of them is that they all are amendment to the residential development code, which we have already slated to look at at a later date. And I think that tinkering with it piecemeal like this is not going to be helpful. And it also doesn't necessarily give us the opportunity to kind of sit back and look at the impact and problem areas and successes of that code in a comprehensive way, to be able to be sure that the tweaks we're making are in fact the highest priority things that we should be doing, as well as to get overall feedback from the community on how well is it working? What are the pain points? What are the things that, you know, kind of, what, what do we support and what do we change? So I would like to propose that we kind of discuss all of them together from the perspective of, is this the right time and the right form to make these tweaks or make any tweaks to the residential development code?
Okay, uh, hearing that, let me ask the question, is there anybody that would be opposed to that approach? Like, is there a specific one of these that you would want to call out and address separately versus having them all considered in one discussion? Because I'm happy if someone wants to pull, like if someone wants to pull number 13 out as a, or, you know, whatever number, like pull one out as a separate conversation, I'm happy to do it. But just want to see.
Could you very slowly scroll through them?
Yeah, I just fixed that number because I was bothering.
Oh, yeah, that was like, I thought there was 16.
Yeah.
Okay, so let's start with number 11. And then, so we'll go through these.
11 is the ceiling height issue related to clear storage space. 12 is the exterior covered decks and covered porches being included in the GFA. 13 is regarding the garages within 10 feet of the property line. And 14, this is the one about the gross floor area incentives for accessory dwelling units. 15 is the one that relates to the type classifications for permits and the noticing requirements. And 16 is the one related to the parking requirements for smaller homes and the threshold where you can go down to less parking spaces.
Yeah, I stand corrected then. 15 is not the residential development code. That was the climate definitions and process.
Yeah, that one's from the administrative code.
So, so, so amend my suggestion to dealing with 1 through 14 and 16, basically the residential development one. And I think maybe we should discuss amendment 15 separately as to whether or not to docket that.
Okay, so the request has been to group 11 through 16 and then separate number 15 as a separate item. Is everybody okay with that? Are there any other ones that people think need to be discussed separately?
Can we do, I mean, is it legal for us to do it this way? Aren't we, are we required to discuss them independently?
I think you can discuss this issue of whether it makes sense to tinker with things related to the residential code together. And then perhaps you want to do a thumbs up or thumbs down vote for each individual one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Dan, the only thing I was going to say is amendment 16, I could be wrong, but I think the way it was described in the staff presentation was perhaps backwards. And so I just wanted to, to clarify what we're actually talking about for that one.
Could you say which number that was again? I missed it.
16.
I think it was 16. It was the one to do with dropping the parking. So let me see. So basically, if I understand it now, if you have a 3,000 square foot or less, that's, is that a GFA? Yeah. Then you only need two spots, but they're required, they're, the recommendation would be to go down into 2,000. So if you were between like 2,000 and one and 3,000, you would then need three parking spaces. Is that, as I understand it, correct?
Yeah. So if your house size was between 3,000 and 2,000, you would now be required to have an additional parking spot, the third spot.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that, but I, I don't personally mind clumping them together.
Question, does, does Karen now put a whole bunch of older houses into non-conformance?
This would just apply to new construction. Sorry, the way I said that was confusing.
Sorry, go ahead, Carol.
Oh, I, I might be misremembering, but I thought there was also a lot size connected to this particular rule.
I don't know the answer to that off the top of my head.
My recollection is that you're not wrong, Carolyn, and that the recommendation that we sent, I think, said for a lot size of, I think, 8,000 square feet. And my understanding, or my recollection was maybe that it was the council changed it to a square footage requirement. And I, and I got a message that my mic is acting up again.
Yes. It's pretty bad.
It's timed perfectly though, because I'm sure there's at least one of us needs a bio break.
So, um, let's do this. Let's break for five minutes, do the same thing again. We'll take a quick recess, think about the collapsing of these and I'll reset my, my mic again. Did that make sense?
Yeah.
All right, can you guys hear me again now?
Yes, that's much better, Dan.
I don't, you know, I think working at Microsoft, I've got a, there's a timeout in my computer for Zoom that. All right, let's see, who else are we waiting for?
Looks like Commissioner Murphy and, oh, there's Mike and I should be able to figure this out. Oh, Jenny.
All right, I think I am back for sure now. All right, are we still waiting for Jenny?
It appears so.
All right, we'll give her one more minute. All right, it looks like we have everyone back. So I think we left off this. So let me rephrase, I think where we left off, which is I think the consensus is to discuss numbers 11, 12, 13, 14, and 16. We'll discuss them all as one. And then we'll have, to the point of someone else, we will still take a, an individual vote on each of them just for consistency so that we have it for the record. We'll just take an informal poll from the group, just to document all of those. And then we will have a conversation around amendment number 15 separately. So I'll just make the ask one last time, are there any other of those that anyone would want to pull out to have a separate conversation? Or are the ones that I mentioned good to just collapse into a single conversation? Okay, hearing none. Allison, would you prefer us to take the big group? Or do you want to start with 15? I think Tiffany, was it you that mentioned pulling number 15 out? Do you want to do that one first? Or do you want to do that one after we do the others?
I didn't mention pulling 15. I think that was Jenny, maybe.
Okay. So Jenny, do you want to, should we cover that one first? Or let's do that one, since it's a single one, do you want to do that one first?
Um, I haven't really thought through which one to do first. I don't really have a preference. Um, I think it's a different set of issues than the residential one. And keep in mind, my, my suggestion was that we're not actively debating the content of the residential one. We're simply debating whether or not that, you know, those are appropriate to bring forward. Um, so yeah, I don't have a preference. Do you want to do the, want to do number 15 first?
Yeah, since it's a single one, if you don't mind, Allison, let's cover that one first and any discussion. And then we'll go back and we'll just have discussion about the others as a group.
Dan, Dan?
Sorry, oh, yes, sorry, Carolyn.
This is one where I think we would really benefit from seeing the applicant's details on the screen.
That's right. Thank you for the reminder.
What page is that?
It looks like it's 33.
This is it.
Yep. So Allison, I don't know if, if you want to quickly overview maybe, I don't know, I'm assuming you know this at least well enough to sort of speak to the, the gist of what he has proposed here. And then Carolyn, if you have specific callouts, because I assume everyone has read the material, that there's specific callouts that you had to the, the content or questions. So maybe Allison, do you want to just maybe that top part, just walk through quickly what those are and what your sort of assessment of the impact would be? And then Carolyn, if you have questions, I think you were saying you wanted to just had a few questions about the detail, so.
Okay, so there's, there's four types of permits specified in the code. And each of them has a different requirement in terms of public notice. And so what he's proposing is moving them, these ones listed here, from either type one to type two, the first three, or type two to type three for the. The first three or type two to type three for the last two. And the effect that has, I believe for the top three there, it would be requiring public notification of those decisions. And so that would be something in the permit bulletin. And then for these other two, I believe it would then, he's asking that it requires public notice, which. Robin, maybe you can help me out, but I think that is. Like a sign in a mailing.
You're exactly right. So when we go to a type three, that means there needs to be a mailing to neighbors within 300 feet. Notice of application in the weekly bulletin and a sign posted on site that lets neighbors know that an application has been. Submitted to the city.
I think what's not covered here in. Dan's submittal is that it would also affect other things in addition to noticing like appeal procedures. I don't know what else, Robin, if there's anything else that would be significant.
Hear you very well. Could you speak? It's a bit louder.
Okay, sorry. So in addition to affecting noticing, changing types would affect other things, including appeal procedures. So what the authority is that something would be appealed to.
So it, whether it goes to the hearing examiner or the city council, is that what you mean by which authority it goes to?
Yeah, our superior court or.
Superior Court.
Each type has a different process for appeals.
Then the case of the first three, if my recollection, type one is an administrative, and Robin, you can clarify. That's if I recall was an administrative. Decision with no notification, is that correct?
We can scroll.
Correct.
We can't see it.
A type one land use reviews require, don't require public notice. They tend to be for the simplest, you know, little discretion needed type of decisions. They do not go to a hearing body like sign commission, hearing examiner, et cetera.
Okay.
Type two, type two goes to, who does it go to? It goes to a hearings examiner? Type three goes to a hearings examiner?
I know type two and three are both staff level decisions, only type four would go to the hearing examiner or design commission, for example. So another, another hearing body. Type two and three are distinguished by the level of public notice that they're required to.
So they, they each require, so if you're going to a type two and you require public notice, that's a 30 day noticing, right?
Correct. So type two requires just what we call public notification, which is a notice in the weekly bulletin. Type three is the one that gets mailing a sign and public notice in the bulletin. And you're right, it requires a 30 day comment period after notice of application.
Okay. Carolyn, did you have other questions here before we move into comments, comments from everyone else?
Well, I didn't, I might have some questions, but I guess I was looking at this in terms of taking a viewpoint. One way or the other, as to whether I thought it was something that should go forward. You're not asking that at this point? This is just.
That's fine. If you want to add commentary, I just know that when you, you had asked for the documentation to be put up. And I wasn't sure if you had specific comments about the commentary from Mr. Thompson, so.
Just really hard to figure out what he's proposing without, you know, without seeing it. So it's really great to have, thank you. Question I might have is. Let's see. This is appeal procedures. I think Lucia pretty much asked the questions that I had in mind in terms of where do appeals go? What notices noticing would change with this?
Okay. Commissioner Weinberg, I'll go to you then. Do you have any questions or comments?
Yes, when was this last changed?
I believe this was adopted in early 2018.
So it was changed less than three years ago.
Correct. And just to repeat what I said when we first started talking about this, I was recommending that. This piece of the administrative code be looked at in conjunction with the residential code. Check in because I think these noticing requirements are related to the residential standards. And have had a similar interest from the community in terms of how neighbors are affected by residential development.
I, I think according to the rules we're supposed to be following, we can't consider this one because it's too soon. The, the code says if the essential elements of the proposal and the proposed outcome have. They have to have not been considered by the city council in the last three years and this one has. So I don't think we have the option of even including it.
Yeah, I. I'll take any, I'll take any direction from the interim director or Allison, but, but I believe that's true with the only. Caveat that may sting in there is whether or not it went through the docketing process or not. I don't know. So I know it didn't go through the docketing process because it was a part of the other thing. But if, if that three years only relates to whether or not it's been through this process or not. My sense is that it's more just broadly, if it's been considered, it can't be considered again, but. I'll.
On the screen, it says that the essential elements of the proposal and proposed outcome have not been considered by the city council in the last three years. This time limit may be waived by the city council if the proponent establishes that there exists a change in circumstances. That justifies the need for the amendment.
Okay. So I, it seems clear to me. Are, is there any dissenting viewpoint on that from the staff or caveat that we need to be aware of? Sorry, let's hear from Jeff first.
So I think that might be legislative action. So if there was a legislative action in 2018. In theory, then there could be a legislative action in 2021. I'm not advocating for against any of these amendments, but I'm just saying that, that three year period would be, would be that. So I wouldn't include a docketing recommendation or setting the docket within that three year period. It would be the council actually taking a vote as to whether to amend the code or not.
Which we did in fact do in 2018, I believe.
Right, so, so 2018 plus the three years would be. 2021.
Yeah, I looked at the code before the, the, the meeting, I saw that, as you pointed out, that this was originally passed in 2018. And then there are several changes that happens to this area of the code in 2019. Although I don't know if these specific line items in this area were changed. So I, I'm actually not sure whether the changes that happened in 2019 are within the three year boundary. And therefore, I, I can't, or therefore we can't look at it. But I don't know, I was hoping you guys might have, since you guys are in this code every day, you might have a clear idea as to. Which of these are within the three year no zone and which ones are actually considerable.
Ted, the only, I think nuance there is that I don't think there's any restriction for the code being amended with more frequency. But in relationship to docketing the action, which requires then. You know, an action by the end of the year, I think that's the part that's bound by the three year. And so the, I think the question you're raising is, is the clock set from 2018 or 2019? I don't think it really matters because we're well within a three year window of either of those dates, so.
What are you saying? That we're, we're not, it's not, it's, there's, I mean, we can't do it because we're. Which way are we going here?
I, I think that's what Ted is asserting is that we shouldn't consider this on the merits. On the specific merits that it's within a window of having been substantially, whatever the language is substantially modified within the last three years.
I mean, it was created.
Yeah, Jenny, go ahead.
Yeah, actually, I have this, I had the same timing question about the rest of the residential code amendments. Because. We did those in 2018 as well, so I would wonder about the same. Are we within the three year period for that as well as possibly within the three year period or the permit typing?
The residential code was adopted in late 2017, so I believe we are past the three years for that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other, just given that commentary, Commissioner Murphy?
A couple of points on that. You got to read the whole thing because the issue is whether the city council wants to waive that limitation. If they find that there's a change in circumstance. So there's, that raises the obvious authority of the council. If we docket it and they believe there's a change in circumstance, they can entertain it no matter, you know, what, what the conclusion is regarding. When it was last passed. So I think that, that the calendar issue is kind of a moot point. But the other question there is that if they did, did the applicant make a case for a change in circumstance? And I don't see that, but the, the other question would be to Allison and Robin is, you know, have they seen. A change in circumstance, possibly in the. The amount of public comment and concern about the lack of notice of certain of these items to the neighbors in the community.
Um. I mean, I have heard some comments from community members that they wish there was more notice. I think the tree removal one in particular, I've definitely heard from at least one citizen about that. But I would say the other circumstance that has changed is that our staff has decreased and doing more notification definitely takes more staff time.
That's almost an argument for not doing it though.
Yeah, no, I agree.
Yeah, I don't think that's the type of change in circumstance that the code and, and the statute is speaking to.
Yeah, Commissioner Boatsman and then Commissioner Meacham.
Well, I think that our instruction from Mercer Island City Code is very, very simple. It just says. For us, we're recommending docket items. That's all we can do. And, and our criteria is the essential elements, the proposal and proposed outcome have not been considered by the city council in the last three years. We know it has been considered in the last three years. In fact, these very specific items that are being raised have been considered in the last three years. If, if the code goes on to say this time limit may be waived by the city council, that's between the applicant and the city council. It's nothing we can even begin to think about tonight because it's not within our authority. We, it's been three, it's been considered within three years. That's, that's all we have to work with.
Yeah, I tend to agree with that. I, I tend to agree with that assessment that, you know, the applicant could obviously petition the council and provide. What their belief and evidence of change in circumstances, but I'm, I'm, I want to agree. Notwithstanding all of my. My viewpoint that I spent and as many of us did labored over this conversation for quite a period of time when we wrote this code. And I sort of feel like we, we've spent the time on this, there's no sense in doing that now unless someone can materially. Show why it's not working. So Commissioner Weinberg, I see you've got your hand up again and then I'll go to anyone else who has comments.
Just a clarification question for Mike. So are you suggesting that we should. Not, not use the, the three year requirement because we don't know whether council is going to make an exception for it yet. And make the decision on whether we refer to council based on its other merits? Is that such what you're suggesting?
Uh, not necessarily. I would, I was really just observing the language and what the implication was. But, you know, I think the point has been made. That the implication of what I was pointing out is that the applicant needs to make that showing. And he can make that either here, which he hasn't, or he could make that to the council. So I would tend to agree that we don't necessarily, unless we had compelling information from staff. That there was a major change in circumstance, which I didn't hear.
Commissioner Pritzker, really, do you have any additional comments or thoughts? No is an acceptable answer.
For once in my life, I have nothing to say.
And Tiffany, I almost called on you and then I saw someone come to take your attention, so.
Yeah, it's getting time to put the kids to bed.
Yep.
So I, I won't weigh in on maybe the legal merits of it. But I, I would say that we took this up recently and we did a very, very thorough examination of it. And so I just don't think we need to be taking it up again so soon, especially without any other, you know, very specific. Information from the public more broadly.
Okay.
I do have one question. What, what would be considered a change in circumstance besides the, you know, gutting of staff resources?
I think that sounds like a pretty drastic change of circumstances. Pandemic, economic downturn, collapse of tax revenues.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, that, that's my question though, is that considered a dramatic change in circumstance? That would cause us to want to maybe eliminate this whole process altogether?
Sorry, have to decide anything like that. I mean, that's not within our purview. It's just, you know. Who, who knows? It's, it's council. I don't know, you know, yeah, you could speculate what it is, but.
Yeah, I guess when I think of change of circumstances, I think about the, the reasoning that was used by the governing body that forms these rules. And are any of the reasons that they used for creating these rules no longer valid such that the same governing body might conclude that it needs to be something different? And I wasn't actually on the planning commission back in 2016, 2017 when we created these rules. So I can't remember what the reasons were, but I think that's, that's what strikes me as a change in conditions or in circumstances.
Yeah, so I'll leave with a pithy quote and I forget who the, the speaker of this was. But to answer your question, Lucia, I don't know if there's a definition of what constitutes a change in conditions. So I don't know what it is, but I'll know it when I see it. So. With that, that's my attempt at humor at 9:30 at night.
At 9:30? Oh my God.
It is. So in, in an effort to move this forward. All those in favor of moving this forward to the list of docketed items to send to the council, please indicate by raising your thumb. All opposed, please indicate downward. Okay, so it will not be included by a vote of zero to seven. And that brings us to items 11, 12, 13, 14, and 16. And, and we don't necessarily, I, I think the consensus was is that we may not need to address any of the individual topics. But really sounded like more broadly as a consideration of sort of reviewing the residential design standards. Does anybody have any comments or questions that they want to opine on here? Commissioner Boatsman.
Yeah, um. All of these have to do with the scale of housing. The bulk, the overwhelming, perhaps at times feeling of intrusion by just the absolute size of houses that are allowed by the code. Every one of these will reduce that impact on our experience living in Mercer Island neighborhoods. on our experience living in Mercer Island neighborhoods. We are having a building boom. And in my neighborhood now, houses that never would have been considered teardowns now have developer signs in front of them. The market is very hot. In a couple of years, we're going to see a lot more new houses by the time this code gets amended. So I would favor these things as being kind of urgent. I would, I think they are urgent. All of them would trim down the bulk of the houses that, that we see. So I would favor putting this on the docket.
Okay, Commissioner Purtio Burley, I know you had tried to get my attention.
Yeah, I, I want to return to Jenny's original comment that when we originally talked, or when we originally put together these residential development standards, part of the discussion was to, to have a look back and it was supposed to be in three years. I mean, that should be having, happening this year or next year, I guess, if it was 2018. I don't think we want to do this piecemeal because the residential development standards need to be considered holistically. And if we start doing it piecemeal, we're going to end up with huge conflicts. I also think that, you know, I mean, I've got several that I think we should be revisiting. So and given the effort that we put into the residential development standards, you know, both as a commission and from the staff perspective, this, I think, would be an urgent or at least a significant work item that we should maybe be looking at. Not these items in particular, but the whole concept of reevaluating. Or not reevaluating, but you know, just looking at what worked and what didn't work. I don't necessarily agree with what he's proposing, but I do agree with the need to start putting on the work agenda, you know, a comprehensive review of the residential design standards. And I don't think that it should happen. They should happen piecemeal at all. I mean, that would be, that would be the death knell to the entire process. Sorry, that's my opinion and I'm sticking to it.
Commissioner Goodman? Do you have any comments?
I, I agree with that. I think we should look at it very comprehensively with, you know, data at several points. So I would not be in favor of moving these forward, but I do think that we should, you know, keep them in the file for just issues to consider when we're looking at the RDS and kind of scoping that evaluation.
Okay, Commissioner Murphy?
I agree. With the last two speakers.
Okay, Commissioner Weinberg?
Yeah, I, it seems like there's a, a lot of, a lot of history behind this. And I think taking out one piece here and one piece there and trying to make changes without considering what are the parts of the spider web shake when you, when you pluck that string is kind of dangerous. So I, I'm, I am in agreement with the last three speakers.
And Commissioner Mitchum, did I get to you? Did you have any comments or did I get, come to you?
Yes, I'm going to bookend the first comment and the last. I, I do think, it sounds like we are approaching a consensus that while individual pieces of these recommendations may be good or not, that it makes a lot more sense to do this holistically. I do think that piecemeal is the death of Paul. And I also think it, to do it piecemeal like this also deprives the public of a real opportunity to kind of weigh in on a more kind of visioning scale. And we have already seen how difficult and non-productive it is when public input is about things like, you know, a foot or two here or angles here as opposed to what is the impact that we want to see of our new code? Do we want things, you know, shorter, taller, wider, you know, shorter back, et cetera? So I, my, my, my recommendation would be to not docket these and to put these in our backpack, not a back pocket. It's got, it's a lot bigger. It's got to be a whole backpack now. But to kind of put those on the list of consideration for when we do tackle the residential code amendments, the residential development code holistically in the future, which is my understanding is that we already have that penciled in for 22.
Yeah, which.
Taking care of it also.
Which strangely sounds like it's two years away, but it's really just a year and a couple of months. Because I think Allison, you mentioned that that was going to come forward at sort of the beginning of 22, which would only be like 14 months from now. So.
That's correct. What is done anyway nowadays?
Yeah, I know. Time means nothing.
Clarification question after you go ahead.
Yeah, no, go ahead.
I, if we end up saying no or recommending no to the council, I presume that the council, it's not like it's gone. The council can still come back and say, nope, you guys gotta look at all, all 16 of them. Give us details on them, right? So it, it's not like it's completely off the list. It's just we're recommending it be off the list, right?
That's correct.
Yep. Yeah. And you know, you know how the council is in this town. Nothing we send to them ever comes back to us the way that we sent to them. Carolyn, did you have one final comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I think Lucia said you thought this, this code was adopted in 2018? Or maybe that wasn't something you said, but in any case, we're at the three year mark already at this point. So now it's fall of 2017, fall of 2020. So we're three years out. And by the time we get more code adopted, you know, it'll be another couple of years. One more thing, and I respect everybody's, you know, viewpoint on this thing and the direction you're going. Just want to add, I, I think that these items that are proposed are pretty discreet. I don't think in terms of the code, they're not very, they're not much tangled up with other things. They were little packets of slack added here and there that I don't think really caused a lot of problem with the rest of the code if they're changed. Thanks.
Okay, I will just end with my couple of comments. I, I agree for the most part with everyone. There's actually a couple of these that I wouldn't necessarily be opposed to thinking about and considering as we move forward. As most of you know, through this process, I was actually a big proponent of trying to figure out how to reduce size and bulk and you know, the amount of the size of our housing. So I'm, I'm, I'm what's the word that I'm looking for? I am sympathetic to the, the, yeah, sympathetic to the, to the effort and the cause. But quite frankly, I think a flurry of amendments like this is a bit, pardon my language, but I think a bit tone deaf to the situation that we're in as a city, both in regards to what our current resourcing abilities are and to the effort that this body and the council and the staff put in no more than a few years ago with the knowledge that it was already agreed to be discussed again in a year's time. So for me, it's just, I think it's, it's, hey, we've already had, we set a plan, we had a plan. There's going to be a plan. There's some great stuff here and to the points that were made earlier, like let's keep this document so that we can pull it back up in a year or so's time when we actually have the real data from the impact of some of these outcomes. So with that, I think everyone has had a chance to weigh in unless anybody is dying to make some last comment. What I'll do is I will call for the inclusion, a vote for the inclusion of items 11, 12, 13, 14 and 16 on the docket. Is there anyone in favor of moving all five of those items forward? Please signify by raising your thumb. Okay. Anyone opposed, please signify by lowering your thumb. Great. So none of those will move forward by a vote of zero to seven. So thank you all for taking the time to go through all of those with what I think is a fair amount of diligence. With that, I have, it looks like agreeance that there are five items numbered one through five on the proposed docket list that was in our packet that we would like to move forward to the city council with two that we would like to mention as potential revisions to the code should time allow that will mention in the staff report, which were items number nine and 10, I believe. So.
Christian, I don't think we can add number 10 because that was a comprehensive.
You're right. My, my apologies. Thank you for clarifying that. So with, with the addition of number nine being added to the staff report and just saying, we feel like this could be done out of band without having to go through the docket process. So with that, what we'll need is we will need a motion and a second to the motion to that effect.
I move to do what you said. Is that what we're supposed to, how we can do it?
I, I think it's close enough. I will rephrase in saying that we are moving items number one through five from the agenda packet forward to the council recommendation for the comp plan docket.
Exactly.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so it's been moved by Commissioner Purtio Burley and seconded by Commissioner Murphy to move the following forward. Now would be the time to have any additional conversation or discussion before we take a vote and we will do a roll call vote when the time comes. Is there any additional discussion or Commissioner Mitchum?
Just a quick question. Procedurally, we are probably still going to want to vote on each amendment or do we not need to do that? Can we just do a blanket vote on all of them?
No, so we, we just did informal votes on all of them, which is how we came to the compiled list and we will now vote on moving the docket with the five items that we have as a group already voted on forward. Okay. Any other questions or discussion?
Does the language of the motion include anything about number nine? Initially, it sounded like it did and then it kind of sounded like it didn't.
That was the intent of what I phrased, the maker of the motion, Purtio Burley. Is that included in your statement?
Well, um, so we're creating a slate called the back pocket slate.
No, we are strictly adding, there's the motion to forward a docket and include in the staff report that we believe item number nine can be addressed, doesn't need to be on the docket and could be looked at as a code amendment during the course of the year should time allow and the council were to direct us.
Exactly.
Interim director, Mr. Jeff.
So, yeah, how about, how about we do that as two motions then? So let's do one motion for the recommended docket, then let's do a second motion for, hey, council, commission felt this was worthy if, you know, time should be available in 2021 to, to take a look at this code amendment that wouldn't require the docket, so.
Okay, I think that's, that's, that's sound advice. So is that clear?
Want me to amend my, my motion?
Let's, let's just, let's restate it. The motion, as I understand it, that's on the table is to move forward the comprehensive plan, the docket for amending the comprehensive plan to include items number one through five of the of the items that were listed in our packet. And the motioner and the seconder are still in agreeance that that's the motion on the table.
Okay. I, I agree.
Commissioner Murphy, you know, that's the, that is the motion that you seconded. Okay, you're on mute, but it looks like you said yes.
Mike, you're, yeah.
I did, yes.
Great. Okay, so that is, that's the motion on the table, items one through five to me move forward as a recommendation. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. There you are, Andrea. Did you want to do a roll call vote?
Yes, please, Chair. Commissioner Boatsman?
Yes, I mean, do I say I or what? What do I say?
I or yes.
I. Commissioner Weinberg?
I.
Commissioner Murphy?
I.
Commissioner Goodman?
I.
Vice Chair Mitchum?
I.
Commissioner, Commissioner PB?
I.
And Chair Hubble?
Yay.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Couldn't say the same thing as everybody. Okay, thank you very much. And then it sounds like if someone has would like to make a motion, we had the recommendation that item number nine be included in the staff report for potential future action as a code amendment.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, that was moved by Commissioner Goodman, correct?
Oh, Carolyn Boatsman.
Carolyn, thank you. So that was moved by Commissioner Boatsman and seconded by Commissioner Weinberg. Are there any other comments or discussion? Okay, hearing none. Andrea, do you also want a roll call here?
Please, Chair.
Okay.
Commissioner PB?
I.
Commissioner Mitch, or Vice Chair Mitchum?
I.
Commissioner Weinberg?
I.
Commissioner Boatsman?
I.
Commissioner Murphy?
I.
Commissioner Goodman?
I.
Chair Hubble?
I.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Yay. Thank you, everybody for all of that work. I'm looking at the is that the, oh, that's the, the, I scrolled down. I'm just looking for the next order of business and I was looking at the February third minutes thinking why are we getting a report, a director's report from Evan?
Business.
Yeah. Great. Thank you very much, everyone, for the great conversation there. Do we have, it looks like the next item up for bid is the director's report.
Well, given the hour, I'll be brief. You know, it was really good to listen to everyone tonight and the conversation that took place. And I would definitely also like to, to publicly thank Commissioner Boatsman and Mr. Goldbach and Mr. Thompson for participating in the public process and having the courage to bring something forward for consideration. It's not always an easy thing to do for folks. So this is why we have the process is to have, you know, things like this considered and have good discussion about it. So I think that took place here this evening. Just quickly, a little bit about me. So Jeff Thomas, I've been with the city since the end of September as interim director. Happy to be here to, to help out Allison and Robin and the rest of the staff and the department. There's, there's no doubt all the discussion that took place this evening and things that you've heard. There's a lot of work going on for a very. there's a lot of work going on for a very small staff. I can tell you without any hesitation, there are other cities that have a community development staff two to two and a half times the size of the Mercer Island staff and have the same amount of work or maybe even less work going on. So in addition to all this legislative work, permits are complex, they're laborious. You know, we have actions going to the hearing examiner as well, code compliance actions going on, building permits. There's a lot of different things that go into the functions and the services of the department. So my job is to help out for the time being. And we're, we're coming close here to completing the budget process. Council is scheduled to take final action on that on December 1. And they, they are required to pass a balanced budget before the end of the year per state law. So we'll look forward to getting that done and in the books. And then that will give final shape to our work program here for 2021 in conjunction with the docket and other work program items that have been included as part of that budget proposal. So with that, I'm, I just, I'll leave you with the thought. I'm always happy to chat. Email right now is probably the most expeditious way to get ahold of me. So feel free to send me an email. Be happy to set up a call or do an email exchange, whatever works best, or a Microsoft Teams session is something we use here at the city. So I'm always happy to chat and kick an idea around or have a conversation about something that, that, you know, you don't agree with or you think, think we need to take a look at. So please feel free to contact me. And with that, I guess, Cheryl, turn it back over to you and to wrap up the rest of the meeting.
When's our next meeting?
That's the next item on the agenda.
Sorry.
Just don't get ahead of yourself.
I'm a forward thinker.
You are, you are. Jeff, welcome to the team. Thank you very much. As you can tell, we're a spry bunch, so. Great, thank you.
Somebody mentioned earlier about putting their kids to bed. It's about time for me to go to bed, so.
Yeah. Which is harder when you're actually in the house and they know that you're there versus away at a, at a meeting. So I have sympathies for Commissioner Goodman right now. So quickly, who, either Allison or Andrea, do you want to walk through the next planned meetings and sort of what the forecast is in the short term? And then we can see if everyone's going to be available.
So the next scheduled meeting is January 6. And I'll just say, we are, after the council adopts the budget and the docket, we will be developing the CPD work plan and the planning commission's schedule. So I imagine we'll be getting in touch with you all in December with more details about what the plans are in terms of topics and meeting schedule and just kind of how we'll move through things the first few months of the year. So I think we could do a general poll on the dates right now, but we'll have a lot more information about what the plan is for those first few meetings once the docket's approved.
Great. And do you see, Allison, once we hit the new year, sort of getting back into a rather regular rhythm of twice monthly meetings or once a month? Or what, like, what is your thought there based on the, both the capacity of staff and just the work plan that's, that's potentially in front of us?
I think we're definitely trying to keep the intensity a little bit lower than where we've been at the past with this commission. We may still meet twice a month, maybe sometimes once a month, depending on, you know, how quickly we need to move through all these items. But, you know, the intention is to get back to a regular meeting schedule and be meeting at least once a month going forward.
Great. So to answer your question, Lucia, it sounds like January 6th, the next scheduled one, but we'll hear from staff in December on the specifics of whether or not it's that first, is it Tuesday or Wednesday? It went only Wednesdays, right? The first Wednesday or whether it's potentially the third Wednesday for the first meeting? Because that, that sixth date is pretty close to the New Year, so. Great. With that, you have anything else, Allison?
That's it for me.
Okay, does anybody else have anything for the good of the order?
They say.
Yeah, hearing none. Everyone enjoy your holidays, Thanksgiving, whatever winter holiday you may celebrate and have a happy new year. And I look forward to seeing you guys all in January.
Bye.
Great.
Thanks, everyone.
Really nice to see you all again.
All right.
Great, meeting adjourned.
Bye.
Bye, Robin. Nice to meet you, Jeff.